Oh. A brush, a brush, a brush.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is May 6, 2019. The 35th meeting of the 23rd Council will come to order. All councilors are present this evening. We will now have a moment of silence led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Isaac Betten, but during this moment of silence, can you please keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers? The Bianca family, the Transit Director Bernie Toon, Jose Hernandez, the U.S. postal worker, and the UNM baseball player Jackson Willer. Thank you, Counselor Betten. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the signup table. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now on Item 3, Proclamations and Presentations. Counselor Borrego?
Thank you, Madam President. Their first proclamation, we will give the proclamation for the New Mexico Department of Transportation, District 3, and I believe that Ken Murphy and his staff are here. If you could come forward, please? And I think you're going to start this for us, Counselor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome. Whereas the New Mexico Department of Transportation invigorates New Mexico economy by facilitating the transportation of goods, people, and services to other states, and whereas the New Mexico DOT maintains strong commitments and practices to ensure traffic safety, environmental excellence, and complete planning, design, construction, and engineering services, and whereas New Mexico's DOT vision and mission is to provide safe, reliable, and efficient transportation systems for the traveling public and preserve New Mexico's environment, and...
And whereas in partnership with other public safety jurisdictions, the Highway Maintenance Crews of New Mexico DOT District 3 encompassing Bernalillo County and the city of Albuquerque make personal and family sacrifices to respond to emergency callouts, weather events, and other highway incidents on nights, weekends, and holidays, keeping our highways safe and traversable, and whereas New Mexico DOT District 3 employees perform their work in high-volume and high-speed traffic conditions, risking their health and lives to maintain the city and county's roads and highway conditions, cleaning and removing litter and hazardous materials alongside and on Albuquerque and Bernalillo Counties highways and roads, and whereas New Mexico DOT's District 3 engineers, construction managers, and inspectors and other staff members are professional dedicated to assuring taxpayer funds are properly spent and that the state receives federal reimbursement for expenditures, and whereas New Mexico DOT engineers, managers, inspectors, and other staff members work nights, weekends, and holidays to ensure reduced construction traffic impacts to the public, and whereas the core values of New Mexico Department of Transportation are safety, accountability, customer service, integrity, teamwork, and communication. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes District 3 of the New Mexico Highway Department of Transportation, and in the spirit of cooperation between the city of Albuquerque and the New Mexico Department of Transportation, respectfully honors the work of the New Mexico District 3 DOT engineer and staff. And I just want to personally thank Ken for the work that they've done on Paseo del Norte, because I've sort of been after them like on a monthly basis, and I would like for you to say anything that you'd like to say this evening.
Counselor Borrego, thank you, and all council. I'd like to thank you all for the recognition, and especially my staff. I have my construction assistant district engineer, Justin Gibson, here with me, and I believe one of my maintenance engineers here, Barry Lidle, who manages a lot of the night work and the stuff that's hard to get done. And then moving forward, I'd like to continue to work well with city staff. We've been doing that for several years at the staff level, meeting with their engineering staff, coordinating staff, and I'd like to thank Director Montoya for reaching out to me when he first came on board to continue the relationship, and Mr. Riel as well for being an open partner.
Thank you, sir. Would your staff like to say anything?
No, thank you.
All right. Well, would you like to come forward and receive your proclamation, please?
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you.
Once again, we have Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. The second proclamation which I will be reading is the proclamation for alcoholism and mental illness, and basically bringing awareness to this, these issues. Whereas alcoholism and mental health issues stigmatize families and individuals, causing denial and isolation from family and friends, and whereas the stigmatization of alcohol and mental health issues emphasize the need to recognize people's struggles with these conditions and offer assistance through counseling, support groups, and medical resources, thereby reaching people who may not fully appreciate the dangers of alcohol consumption and poor mental health. Whereas since 1948, Mental Health America and their affiliates across the country have led the observance of May as Mental Health Month, reaching millions of people through local events, screenings, and offerings of medical support, and whereas in May of 2019, Mental Health America will extend outreach efforts to include and explore topics of animal companionship, spirituality, humor, work-life balance, recreation, and social connections as ways to advance mental health and general wellness. Whereas alcohol consumption can significantly contribute to declines in mental health, and the American Addiction Center for each year recognizes Alcohol Awareness Month in April, and whereas alcoholism and mental health issues affect all components of society, its individuals and families, communities and cultures, both males and females, and all economic levels regarding, regardless of race, and whereas mental health and alcoholism are tied to physical health, the depth of family, community, and cultural connections, and the acceptance and assistance offered by these close relationships and resource institutions. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes Mental Health and Alcohol Awareness Month, and through measures of prevention, early identification, intervention, counseling, community building, and adequate funding at local and federal levels to draw awareness to and promote mental health and substance use awareness as critical components to overall wellness. And the individual who is receiving this proclamation is Betty Whiten. Betty, could you come to the microphone, please, and any of your staff, and just tell us who you're with and if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. I am very, very honored to be able to accept this proclamation for making Mental Health Month this month for May, because together we make a difference. I am proud to be able to accept this proclamation on behalf of NAMI, which is the National Alliance on Mental Illness, New Mexico. I'm the president. Also, for the Albuquerque-Bernalillo County Government Commission Behavioral Health Initiative, the tax incentive that gives us money to help and build some of the resources and the programs that are really making a difference. I also am here to represent the Department of Justice and the Mental Health Resource Advisory Committee, which is the group working with APD to reform, educate, teach about mental illness, and make a difference. I am also one of the trainers that works with the crisis intervention training. APD, Albuquerque Police Department, has 100% of its law enforcement officers have been trained in crisis intervention, and 40% have asked and qualified for additional training. That is so exciting to see the collaboration that's going on in our community. One of the departments in Albuquerque Police Department is the Crisis Intervention Unit, and this unit is the one who's responsible for training and running the mobile crisis team. We are really excited about what happened, and the Sergeant Dosal designed this patch that can be bought and worn by all of the Albuquerque Police Officers during the month of May in recognition of Mental Health Month, and I bought one for each of you. I just think you all are so awesome. I've seen the city council, the county commission, NAMI, the police department, Department of Justice, all work together to pull in the same direction to make a difference for our entire community. Together, we are successful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you like to come forward, please?
You know, I forgot to mention something. One in five people in our country at any one time this year has a mental health condition. In New Mexico, it's one in four. We're number one in the country for incidence of mental health conditions, so thank you. As New Mexico, we thank you.
Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a proclamation recognizing foster-parent appreciation. So would Joanna Ruby and Ann McKinney come down to accept this proclamation, and I will go ahead and read it. Whereas hundreds of Albuquerque residents service foster care parents to children who are removed from their homes through no fault of their own because the homes are not safe places. Whereas foster care parents open their homes in their hearts to children who need love and support while respecting and fostering connections to the children's culture, religion, and community. Whereas foster care is a system which a minor is placed into a ward, residential childcare community, treatment center, or private home of a state-certified caregiver, and whereas according to New Mexico's Kids Matter, there are around 1,100 children in foster care in Bernalillo County, and whereas according to the state's Children, Youth, and Families Department, CYFD's FY 2019 Annual Report and Strategic Plan, 469 new households partnered with CYFD and were licensed during the physical year. Whereas in about four to six months, an adult can qualify to become a foster parent if he or she is 18 or older. Healthy, can pass a fingerprint, federal and state criminal record check, is a New Mexico resident, is willing to attend 32 hours of free training, is willing to participate in a free home study, and is committed to caring for children. And whereas according to Adopt U.S. Kids, there are approximately 2,300 children in foster care in New Mexico, with 70 of these children waiting for adoptive families, and whereas according to CYFD's 2019 Annual Report and Strategic Plan, the average number of children in foster care for a given month was 2,587, and whereas March 1, 2019, was declared Foster Parent Appreciation Advocacy and Awareness Day by the New Mexico Senate. People claim that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby declare May 6 Foster Parent Appreciation Day. So thank you all for coming, and please speak. Please say a few words.
Yes. Thank you. I'm Joanna Ruby, and I have been a foster parent since 1992. It's also Nurses Week, and I'm also a nurse, so that is how I got into foster care. A lot of children come through the University of Hospital and all the other hospitals, and I began caring for a baby in 1992, who I realized no one wanted, and it never occurred to me that you could be born and no one wanted you. And that has started a 26, 27-year journey of foster kids, and I'm soon to get my 191st child at 6 o'clock tonight, and it's just an honor to be part of CYFD. And I would like to say, I know that CYFD gets a lot of bad publicity, but I have worked with them for 26 years, and there are so many good people in CYFD who really try to do the right thing, but we are working with not enough funding, not enough people, and we work with a lot of very difficult situations, and I think some people are here. I mean, I saw that they're here for immigration, and we work with all different kinds of people, and it's hard to work with people. And so, these children are very special. It is. But these people are really special. I really like smaller people, and if you're under like three feet, they're like my favorite, and they're a lot easier to deal with than people who are over three feet. And so, I am, anyway, always happy to help out. And so, I brought my daughter. My daughter is not 18 yet, but she's a great foster parent already. She has like learned from the best. She's had about, helped with about 80 children in our home so far, and then, yeah, she's 16, and she is just wonderful. And then, my friend Marilyn Beck and her mom, and she, they both have, and also my friend Kelly back here, she's a, has been with us along this journey. And so, it takes a village, and so even though you're here for other issues, you're part of the village. And so, we're all here actually very integrated, and so even though we're here for different issues, we should, we're, we are trying to make New Mexico better, and so that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Madam President, before...
Counselor Davis.
If I could just add, I want to acknowledge and say thank you to this council. Earlier this year, we passed new legislation, I guess the end of last year, under the city's new family leave ordinance that allows city employees to take time off from the city in order to help with fostering new members of their family at home, and that made us a leader in the state of New Mexico and one that I think other cities and businesses are looking to copy. But our city employees are stepping up to help, and that was because of their advocacy, in part because some of our city foster parents really stepped up to say that they wanted some more time to be able to do that work, and we were able to do that. And so, I want to acknowledge and say thank you to this council and the mayor for helping us pass that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Davis, for that reminder. That, I really liked seeing that in that particular bill, so, and I understand that the New Mexico Legislature passed a bill in this session, if I'm not mistaken, which helps young people who are aging out of the foster system, which has been a big hole, and I hope this helps it. But actually, I have a question for you. As people who have experienced, lots of experience with helping kids who are probably, a lot of them are troubled, have issues with them, carrying around with them, is, how do you, how do, what would your advice be to improve the foster system? Because unfortunately, as I'm sure you also know that there's some not happy stories there. So what would you all do to help improve that program?
I don't think there's any one answer, and we just addressed this when we were up in the legislature. You know, we talk about broken systems, and you know, really in some ways, I've kind of described it as a shattered system, and it's really hard to put together shattered. And what has changed, and I'm just going to just put this right out there, is when I started doing foster care in 1992, the drugs on the streets were cocaine and heroin. Parents could parent on cocaine and heroin. What's on the streets right now is meth, and so the beast has changed, but we are still working with the same, it's kind of like working on the typewriter. We're still trying to do some of the same things, implement some of the same rules along the same way, and it's just not working. I, we need, I mean, funding is always, isn't funding always the answer to New Mexico's every single problem in our whole entire state is funding? And so, you know, I don't know that there's one answer. I think that we have to just keep trying and not think that, money, we need money for programs for these moms, and, you know, people talk about more foster homes. You could have more foster homes. You can have 10, 10 times more foster homes, but that will not solve the problem, the underlying problem of where we're at right now in New Mexico. And, you know, our poverty level and our drug and alcohol level is run amok, and, you know, you can open the paper on Friday night, Saturday night, Monday morning, and it all leads to the same thing. It's violence, it's poverty, it's drugs, it's alcohol, and those, these kids are just the victim of all of this behavior. And so, I don't know. If you have more police, is it more police the answer? I don't think so. Is more foster parents, more social workers? More social workers. So if I had to pick one, I'd say more social workers. Yeah. So I'd have to pick one. We need more social workers who are not so tired, who can make a sound decision, because if you're too tired and you're overworked, who can make a sound decision about a child? But we are very quick to blame them if anything goes wrong. And so, I would have to say, or pay them more so we can retain more social workers. Yeah.
Counselor Borrego.
Just to bring light to the issue, how many children are available for foster care or foster adoption?
Well, that's, that's, so he talked about, at any one time, there's about 2,000 children in New Mexico who are currently in the foster care system, and that comes and goes every single day. It changes within the 2,000, 2,500 mark. There's about, I have two little girls right now in my home, who are both two, who are both freed for adoption. There's a lot of children in New Mexico who are actually freed for adoption, and people think, one of the things that people think is that adoption costs money, not when you go through CYFD. And there's a lot of children who are available for adoption, but CYFD can be very hard to work with, and people don't want to work with them because of their reputation. But behind, right behind them is a child who needs a home. So currently, there's foster adopt, I mean, we have a lot of foster adoption homes. I think that Marilyn might be open to adopting at some point. I adopted two children, and my family together has adopted 12 children. And so, we have a lot of adopted children, but we are, I'm too old anymore to adopt, and I...
Just follow up. Who would, who would people contact in order to adopt?
You would want, you'd have to go through the foster care system, so 841-7800, and they will ask if you're willing to be a foster parent, and it's, it's the same, it's the same road. You can want to just adopt, but you have to become a licensed foster parent to adopt, because the child has to be placed in your home for six months before you are eligible for adoption. So that's the answer, I guess.
Thank you. Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. And a couple things they didn't mention. I'm also adopted through the foster system, and one thing is there's also a child, there's a tax credit. It's not as beneficial as it used to be, but not only is it free, but if you adopt a special needs child, and most of the people, or most of the children in the foster care system would probably qualify.
Yes, they do.
Means they have some sort of, an issue which, which brought them there. So that's, and another thing, what I found when I was going through this, CYFD is, and I found it's nationally actually a problem in the foster care system, is that when there's a dispute between a foster parent and a social worker, they tend to move the child rather than moving the file. So I don't know if that's something, so I know I've worked with Sarah Palmer at CYFD, when sometimes there'd be some sort of disagreement, and CYFD, they move the kid instead of taking the file and taking it down the hall and say, you...
Well, it's easy to just say that they just move the child, but you have to look back in terms of what that foster parent was told when that child was placed with them. And I have been told, this child's going to be up for adoption. Now, if I was a brand-new green foster parent, I would probably start buying them like, you know, college furniture or something, but, you know, they're, not till the child has been in your home for about a year to two years, or does you, will you really know? They will do. So if I, if I have expectation of adopting a child, and they find somebody else in that family in that two-year period, that child's going with the family, because family first. So they, and if you don't understand that CYFD is not an adoption agency, it is a foster, the reunification is the number one priority with CYFD, and as long as you keep that in the forefront, then you won't be fighting with CYFD, which is why I've been able to work with them for 26 years, 27 years, is because you have to kind of start seeing things from another angle.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Harrison. Before you make your way up, since you're a nurse, I actually had a note here because I didn't prepare a proclamation. I didn't remember till this morning, but it is Nurses Week. I happen to have five nurses in my immediate family, my daughters, my niece, my daughter-in-law, so I just really appreciate all the dedication and hard work that all nurses do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Come up and receive your proclamation. Come up and receive your proclamation.
You're welcome.
With that, we actually have a presentation from Mr. Jeff Hertz, our council policy analyst, regarding the Small Resource Fair final report.
Thank you, Counselor, sorry. Thank you, Counselor President Pena and members of the council. I know you have a busy night ahead of you guys, and so, I'm going to try to be as quick as I can. But I'm going to speak a little bit about, before you guys, we have a report on the Small Business Resource Fair that was held on April 6. And if you, if you recall, back in November of 2018, through Resolution 1882, this called for the convening of our first, of the city's first Small Business Resource Fair, and a report with some recommendations on holding future fairs. So, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about the report. First of all, I want to say that while there's many times where city departments and staff feel that we lack the resources and the capacity to really inform the public about resources that are available in terms of supporting small businesses, resource fairs are a great tool for bringing resources out into the community and accessing and activating a lot of the resources that are already out there. And so, we felt that this first fair was a, was a great, a great first attempt in the city, bringing those resources out into the community, rather than having people come down to City Hall. So, we learned a few things from holding this first fair. For one, it's a catalyst for interdepartmental collaboration. There's a lot of departments that are involved here, representatives who are here tonight, who did a lot of great work in preparation for this fair. Secondly, this is a great venue and a great tool for supporting our city navigators. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have any of our city navigators attend, attend tonight, but we would love to have, if you guys have any other questions, I know that we have a representative from Economic Development here tonight who could speak a little bit more about the city navigator program. Also, fairs, fairs, these resource fairs are more than just informational, right? It's more than just giving out handouts and flyers about how to register your business or apply for a loan. This was very much a demonstrative type of project as well, a demonstrative event, and the fact that we had pop-up vendors there at the event. And so, we had a lot of small businesses that are just getting started, that are bringing their, their products to the market. And so, that was a, that was a more engaging aspect of the fair. Also, this is a very, this is a great opportunity for the city to try out some more innovative and cost-effective outreach methods. We ended up utilizing ABQ Ride, we really appreciate that, in using our bus panels on the buses in order to do some more intensive type of outreach. Next is that, it also raises awareness about a lot of services that our different departments are coordinating with local vendors. For instance, we had the Office of Equity and, the Office of Equity and Inclusion help us in identifying a minority-owned business vendor who helped provide translation and interpretation services during the fair. And lastly, this, this is a great opportunity for the city to take the initiative in really bringing together our small business ecosystem, including CPAs, attorneys, and other business professionals. So, I'm going to quickly kind of go through some of the outcomes of the fair, and those are all included in the, the recommendations and the findings in your, in your report before you. One is that we had 48 survey participants, both existing business owners and aspiring business owners that really wanted to get involved in this fair. We had 35 attendees. We had 12 different city and state departments attend this event. I think, I think that's, that's something to be, take a note of. We really appreciate all the different departments getting involved. We also had a panel during this event. We had a lot of subject matter experts, whether they be small business owners who are just getting started, representatives from small business support groups, even some city employees. We had 12 pop-up vendors who not only were there receiving information, but also getting their products out there. We had 11 participants who got engaged with the city navigator program. And again, we have someone from Economic Development here, in case you have some questions about how the navigators operate. But they're almost like small business coaches, right? They're, they're really helping people navigate the small business ecosystem that's out there. And then last, we had five local small business groups and organizations attend as well. So, we really appreciate the opportunity to lead this, this first effort in convening our first Small Business Resource Fair. And in, in the report, we have kind of the process for doing that, as well as the outcomes, as well as recommendations for holding future fairs. And so, we hope that the counselors, that the council, as well as individual departments, can use this as a tool for, for future efforts in supporting our small business community. So, I, I stand for questions. Like I say, unfortunately, we didn't have anybody from the city navigator program here tonight, but we do have some other city departments here who were involved. So, thank you.
Any questions? No, who do we have here, Jeff? Are you talking about Cynthia Hara Mio, the director?
Counselor President Pena. Actually, I don't think that Cynthia was able to make it tonight, but I think Lucas Pedraza is here.
Lucas is here. Well, I don't know that it's necessary to bring him up if he doesn't have anything that he pressing that he wants to say, but I just really want to congratulate you. I think you did an outstanding job with this. You know, we have lots of ideas for small businesses, small businesses that really don't know how to navigate the system. This resource fair was important for people not just to go, come downtown to receive the information, as you stated, but for us to reach out to them and have it more interactive than just passing out information and literature. It was about really helping people through the next steps of starting their business or expanding it. So, thank you, Jeff. I appreciate all your work.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Thanks. Next, next, we have a presentation from the Kirtland Partnership Committee, Jim Wibley, Weibley, Weibel? Thank you. Committee Chair and Brad Stewart, Committee Chair-elect, are here this evening to give a brief presentation.
Good afternoon, or good evening, councilors. My name's Jim Weibel. I'm a local commercial real estate broker here in town, and I'm, was going to be joined by Brad, but he unfortunately came down with the flu, so couldn't join me. So, I'm here to just give you a brief presentation about the Kirtland Partnership Committee. This is one of the few times Kirtland Partnership has come to the city council and talked about what Kirtland Partnership Committee does. And essentially, you can see our, our mission on the bottom of that slide is to support, preserve, and grow Kirtland Air Force Base. And just, just going through this slide, the, what we call the, the base and all its mission partners is, as the Kirtland National Security Complex. You should have this in front of you, by the way, we passed out copies to everybody. So, if you are interested or want to just ask questions later, I'm happy to take them. But the Kirtland National Security Complex with all its mission partners produces a $6.7 billion annual impact in New Mexico. And so, we see that as a really vital mission for the Albuquerque, Burnley County, New Mexico in general. And you'll just see sort of a hypothetical there on the side that, you know, how long, how long, if you gave somebody a million dollars, how long would it take to give them a billion? And it'd take you three years about to do that. So, just, it's a dramatic impact to the city and the county. And essentially, here at the bottom, it's a privilege to have that, the Kirtland Air Force Base here in, in New Mexico. The typical airbase, you see there a diagram where, you know, there's a very vertical alignment between the major command, the airbase wing, and then the, the airman on any typical airbase. Kirtland Park, Kirtland Air Force Base is dramatically different from this, and this is, this is part of the reason Kirtland Partnership Committee exists. The tip, the alignment for Kirtland Air Force Base is, is like this diagram here. There is a airbase commander, but that commander supports one major command in, in the Air Force. There are also many other major commands on Kirtland Air Force Base. That complexity, and along with the addition of DOE with Sandy National Labs, the National Nuclear Security Administration, and some of the other mission partners out there, make it a very unique facility, and therefore, a, a very strategic part of the Air Force and the Department of Energy. Our membership is a broad base of community, community people from all kinds of walks of life, and they give their time. We're all volunteers, and we give our money. We fundraise. It's a 501(c)(3) organization that we have Kirtland Partnership Committee in. And candidly, the city of Albuquerque provides some financial support, and I want to thank you all for that as well. That is very vital to the support of Kirtland Partnership Committee. In terms of other resources, we have a standing committee that I'll mention later on, that we get support from the planning organization. David Campbell and Russell Burito provide support to our Kirtland Community Sustainability Committee, and that meets on a quarterly basis. They attend that and, and help us work through what I'll call deconfliction of the various uses on, on Kirtland Air Force Base and Albuquerque Sunport. So, we're thankful to have them. And our board is made up of a number of people, cross-section of people that have some military background and then some that don't, as myself. I'm a civilian. I've never been in the military, but I, I just provide my time and effort into the support of Kirtland Partnership Committee. Kirtland Partnership Committee started before 1995. It actually started in the late 80s to start on infrastructure work with Kirtland Air Force Base. Then, there were some other strategic issues on missions of Kirtland Air Force Base, and then really, it got going around 1995 when there was a BRAC round, you know, base realignment and closure. And then, a, a small group of people came together and formed what's now Kirtland Partnership Committee, and went through that BRAC process to find a best-known method. And in the end, that was, that was a best-known method that was solicited as, as a, from other communities, is how to best do this, and how to recognize the value of that Air Force Base or that, that installation in your community. The overall goal, as I said, to support, preserve, and grow Kirtland National Security Complex. BRAC and military value is, is how this stuff is judged. Military value is a, a very interesting concept. It's, it's, you know, in other words, how does some specific mission contribute to the overall Air Force and contribute to the overall value of the Air Force's mission? A lot of the stuff that, that we have that going on here are directly in support of the military value mission of the Air Force. So, what would happen is if Congress right now specified a BRAC, and, and just to bring this little bit in context, they did a study in, the Department of Defense did a study in the last several years, and they, they estimate that the Army has 33% excess facilities, the Navy 7%, and the Air Force has 32% excess facilities as it stands right now. So, if there was legislation that came up in the Congress, that could be authorizing a BRAC, then we could be in the same situation, going through a BRAC conversation again. So, it's, it's important that we understand where we stand. I'll let you read the rest of that stuff. The Secretary will give priority consideration to military value criteria and, and make recommendations in terms of closure or realignment of missions as, as that process goes on, if that process takes place. KPC has had a lot of successes. There's a list of them there. I'm not going to read them. A couple of them that I'd just like to mention are, KPC worked with the state and Valencia County and the city of Belen, and they, they installed a new runway at the Belen Municipal Airport. And you may not think, well, that's not that big of a deal. Well, what was happening was the 58 Special Operations Wing was having to travel into Colorado to be able to do training missions. And by the installation of this crosswind runway, they can now train within 20 minutes of Albuquerque and then go down to Belen, do hot touch and goes, and be able to use that runway in an unlit scenario. And in other words, be able to operate as they would operate in any theater where they're deployed. Another thing that's very unique about New Mexico that, and the reason the 58 Special Operations Wing is here, is our altitude and what they call density altitude for the aircraft that they fly is very similar to the Theater of Operations. And therefore, there's some very unique geographic areas in New Mexico, very close to Albuquerque, that create realistic training environments for the Air Force. And, and those are very important to Albuquerque and very important to Kirtland Air Force Base. Current issues that, that we work with Kirtland Air Force Base on are, they always have concerns, and we get feedback on this, and we try to work with them on it. They always have concerns about crime. They always have concerns about public education. So, they're the same things as the rest of the citizens in Albuquerque have. And so, we try to work with them on various things like that, that impact our quality of life, just like they impact their quality of life. The other one I have on here, the landing zones that I already brought up, and things like encroachment. So, we have a lot of military airspace, and especially in southern and eastern New Mexico. And as we deploy alternative energy assets like wind turbines, those can potentially come in conflict with the military airspace that exists in New Mexico. So, we, we are looking for ways to have them coexist and not create conflicts for each other. Finally, you'll see on the list there, we've got mobility of licensure. We had a bill that went through the state legislature, it's called HB 530, that would allow licenses from other states that were active-duty members' licenses to be recognized by our, by our licensure board, and allow that person to bring a license in from Kansas or Texas or something like that, and, and be able to be a nurse, and be able to be a, a real estate agent, be able to be a psychologist, or whatever that license covered at that, at that time. So, that, that bill unfortunately didn't make it all the way out. We'll, we'll be bringing it back to the legislature next year. One other thing, you can see the diagram here that I've got on this page on the 58 Special Operations Wing. If you just look at that, you'll see the two airports in the circles. That's Albuquerque. The, the big circles are Albuquerque Sunpoint or Kirtland Air Force Base. That's Belen in the bottom. And then, that little red circle to the left is that operating area that's BLM land, that Kirtland Air Force Base has a memorandum of understanding to operate and do that landing zone training on. And it's really critical to their success. That's a, that's an, make sure, that's an area that we're working to make sure that they have long-term access to that landing zone area. So, in, in summary, what we're going to do is continue to, to work closely with the Kirtland leadership and, and keep Albuquerque and surrounding communities informed as to what's going on and what the needs of that asset are. And as the Air Force face their continuing, continuing challenges with readiness and, and modernization, we're going to continue to support that, those efforts in contingency deployments. And then, we're committed to a strong working relationship with local, state, and federal governments. So, with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Jones?
Yes. Jim, thanks for being here. That's a, that's a really interesting presentation. Having done a lot of work out in the airport area, one of the things you touched on, but I'm not sure everyone understands, when you talked about the transfer of licensing, you're not talking about that for the military personnel, are you? Mostly, aren't, it's spouses come here and they can't work, which is a big thing.
President Pena, Counselor Jones, you're exactly correct. It's spouses that, you know, they, they make moves about every two years. And so, as that spouse moves around, if they're CPA, they have to get that license reestablished in that next state. And, and other than attorneys, which we can't affect, because that's, that's governed by, you know, another branch of the legislature, we can affect the licensure and that recognition of the licensure in New Mexico with that bill.
Thank you.
Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. Wible. I noticed in your report, and I have attended two of your meetings and been very impressed by the work that you all do. I noticed that you work with APS, and specifically, I, I see that you've worked with Kirtland Elementary and Wary Elementary, two elementaries of which I taught at, by the way, in my early days. And I would like to invite you somehow to District 5, some of our schools out there, because we have quite a few schools, especially new schools, like Volcano Vista and some new elementary schools. I'd also like to encourage your group to take a look at the north and south, northwest and southwest mesas, and any opportunities that you might find- Mesas and any opportunities that you might find with Double Eagle Airport.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you being here. Next, we have Counselor Davis.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, Madam President, thank you very much. If it's possible, I'd like to ask that Dr. Martin Hickey from True Health be allowed to speak to us very briefly on a matter that's at the end of our agenda tonight, it's been one that we've talked about a lot, about the opportunity for transitioning our city to our self-insured insurance program. I know they came down for a presentation this evening very briefly, but they're just going to keep it to a couple of minutes, and I appreciate that courtesy, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam President, Counselors. I am Martin Hickey, a physician, and am the President of True Health New Mexico, known earlier as New Mexico Health Connections, the co-op health program, started in the Exchange, and for those of you old enough may remember that I was the CEO of Loveless in the 90s. Nonetheless, I'm humbled to be able to be here in front of you today to let you know that recently, we did apply to become a health plan for city employees. And the main reason that we applied is that, as we look around the state, federal employees, state employees, they all have choice, and they have choice of U&amp;M and Loveless and not just Presbyterian, which the city is currently limited to. The Presbyterian is a great system, believe me, I know, I'd like to say I trained some of their CFO was, or their CEO, Dell Maxwell, was my CFO when I was the CEO at Loveless. But, we think that it's important, through a plan, to be able to provide that choice in the future. There was an announcement of an award and there was some appeal, but we have not received any final information about that. I noticed you have something on your schedule tonight. The other thing is, I just wanted to give you a little bit about True Health New Mexico. Now, look at me, I've been around for a long time, and I would say that of my colleagues as well at True Health New Mexico, that we have been the leaders of many health plans and institutions in the city and the four-county area for a number of years. So, while we're a new health plan, we're actually people who are deeply experienced in healthcare coming together originally under the Affordable Care Act. The other thing is that we are not just a health plan, we are a plan for health. So, what does that mean? It means we remove barriers to care. We have no copays or any out-of-pocket for any generic chronic drugs, just don't do it, that's a barrier. Do the same for all behavioral health medications, no copays, no out-of-pocket, and to really remove barriers, we have no copays, coinsurance, anything for behavioral health visits. You don't want someone running around a house looking for that $50 copay when there's someone in the household in crisis. And so, we remove barriers, but removing barriers lowers the cost of care. Because as was said before, one in four with a behavioral health condition in this state, it's actually, that's just at any one time, and we all know that people have this, but the other piece is that chronic conditions cost three times as much when there is an untreated behavioral condition. So, we just wanted you to know that we have a clear path to better health status, that's been germane since we started back in 2012, and that we really would love to have the city employees be able to get access to all the physicians. There's only a handful that there's access to now, at U&amp;M, as well as a hospital, and Loveless Health Systems has restarted the Loveless Medical Group, and it's getting to be a huge group. And so, the issues with access and so forth would be significantly improved, and in your own surveys, people said that they would like to have choice. So, I would just like for you to know that there is a potential choice option, maybe not at this time or what have you, but there hopefully will be in the very immediate future. And I thank you so much for being able to make you more aware of, that many of us have been doing this for a long time and want to contribute to the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President, I have one question, and that is in reference to, some of our employees have been given the opportunity to go to the Mayo Clinic to deal with some of their illnesses because they've not been able to get the help here in Albuquerque. Will that same opportunity be awarded to those individuals?
Absolutely. We often find that while we're a small state, we don't always have the treatment options that are best. And the best way to treat someone is to go to the best place. We recently sent a well-known legislative figure to the most expensive hospital in the country, Cedar Sinai in California. Why? Because it's the right thing to do and a better chance of a cure. So, we always look at that opportunity to be able to get people where they're going to get the best chance of a treatment and a cure.
And there will be a stopgap in the policy, is that correct? Where if it goes over a certain dollar amount, then the insurance company does kick in to pay for the additional costs, is that correct?
Yes, we do, I mean, if we send them, I mean, they're covered. And also, we passed a bill through the legislature, we helped lead the charge, on the surprise billing, which is a terrible thing because if you're in a rural hospital, the anesthesiologist may be contracted, but they're not in the network, and so, they charge full billed charges. And that's awful, and we got that bill passed. So, we are always looking, remember again, enter upstream, you don't have downstream. We have many lower emergency room visits because we did the upstream.
Thank you.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, maybe I'll direct us to Mr. Real. It seems, in this presentation, I don't know what to think of it, in terms of, is this, I mean, is this something that should go through the RFP process, not lobbying directly to council? I mean, that's something that came to mind.
Madam President and Counselor, this did go through an RFP process, I think as Dr. Hickey indicated, they were not selected, but we are aware of their strong interest and the mayor shares identical, incidentally, a lot of you all's perspective is giving people choices, and as we move forward with this self-insured program, that's in fact one of the goals for us is to give our employees choices.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President, I would just like to hear from Ms. Griffin, she has something, I think, for us that she needs to talk about.
Good evening, Madam President, Counselors, I'm Joanie Griffin, I know a lot of you, I own a small firm here in town, Sunny 505, formerly Griffin and Associates, and I'm here as a client of True Health New Mexico. And I would just encourage the council in fiscal year 21, I know it's too late for fiscal year 20, to look at offering your employees choices. And I wanted to just share a story that happened to me, four years ago, I was in a very severe bicycle accident, I got hit by a lumber truck on my bicycle and shattered my back and was misdiagnosed in Durango and came to Albuquerque, finally got diagnosed correctly on the Thursday of Labor Day weekend. And in order for me to get any treatment, I had to have an MRI, and it was scheduled for the Tuesday morning at 8:00 immediately following Labor Day. So, you can imagine, right, healthcare, that's never going to happen, I was freaking out. I was a patient then of New Mexico Health Connections, the previous company to True Health, had local access, was able to get on the phone with people, got my MRI scheduled, got immediately on the road to health. Here I stand today, competing in the national senior games, as will our Counselor Brad Winter, defending our titles here for New Mexico. And I really feel like I would not have had that if I wasn't insured with True Health. I've been in business for 29 years, I've been insured with Loveless, Presbyterian, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, New Mexico Health Connections, and True Health. And every year, I give my employees the options of which insurance companies they want to go with, we're always open to having more than one, and for the past few years, they've selected True Health because of all the benefits that Dr. Hickey mentioned, namely, no copays for all your preventive needs, no copays for a lot of the prescription drugs that people take, no copays for behavioral health. And I think that's really important as we're looking at providing health insurance for our employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego.
I just want to say, Joanie, you look amazing. Joanie and I went through Leadership Albuquerque together in the 90s.
You're dating us.
She has been a mover and shaker of this community, and I think that, you know, her reference is actually taken to heart, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President, I would like to call up, to give a presentation, and if it could be a brief presentation from Peter Sanchez, I think he may be out in the lobby.
Good evening, Counselors, Madam President, my name is Norberta Frescos, I look a little bit like Peter, but not quite, you'll hear from him in a minute. I want to just express my real sincere gratitude for the opportunity to be here this evening to thank you, just a simple and big-hearted thank you for all the support that this city has shown for Mariachi Spectacular. We're celebrating our 29th year, this 29th anniversary this year, and are really excited and feel very grateful and blessed because of all the wonderful impact that youth, children, and adults have had by attending and participating in Mariachi Spectacular over the past 29 years. I wish we could bring a little bit of all the wonderful things, positive experiences that children along with youth and adults have had the opportunity to experience. So, from the bottom of our heart and on behalf of all the over thousands of young people, adults and children that have participated in the spectacular concert and conference, thank you, Counselors, thank you, Madam President, we are truly grateful and thank you for that, thank you.
Madam President, City Council, thank you for having us here this evening, my name is Peter Sanchez, I'm the President of the Attrisco Companies, of which Mariachi Spectaculad is one of those companies. I want to reiterate what Norberta just said, that we're very grateful and very thankful for all the support that you have all given us over the years. It has made Mariachi Spectaculad the organization that it is today, which is the most nationally-recognized conference and concert program of its type in the country. We attract tourism, we attract attendees from around the country, from New York to California each year, we also bring people from our own backyard. And one of the gestures of our gratitude tonight is to bring to you some entertainment, we have the Attrisco Heritage Academy Mariachi Ensemble here to play for you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Counselor Borrego.
In light of that beautiful entertainment, I'd like to just acknowledge Cinco de Mayo, which was on Sunday, and I just wanted to say that my grandmother on my mother's side was born on Cinco de Mayo, if she was still here today, she would be 126.
Thank, Counselor Jones.
And I'll up that one, my husband was born on Cinco de Mayo and he's 75 years old today.
Okay, now back to business. Our next item is for economic development discussion, there is none, item number five, administration question and answer period, Counselor, are there any, Counselors, are there any questions for this administration? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, the journal, Counselor Borrego.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, there was? Okay. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President, I move approval of the April 15th Journal.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of the journal, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no, motion passes. We are now on item seven, communications and introductions, are there any changes to the letter of introduction, Counselor Jones?
I don't think I have changed the letter of introduction. Oh, I do, never mind, I'll find it. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing O-63 and referring it to the Committee of the Whole. O-63 is adopting a fire code prescribing regulations consistent with nationally-recognized good practice for the safeguarding, to a reasonable degree, life and property from the hazards of fire, explosion, and dangerous conditions arising from the storage, handling, and use of hazardous materials and devices.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no, motion passes. Next item is Counselor Sanchez and Borrego, but Counselor Borrego, would you take this one?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing RA-4 and placing it on the May 20th council agenda for final action. RA-4 is amending the City Council Rules of Procedure, Article 2, Sections 1 and 2, dealing with the timing of the election of the President and Vice President, Article 2, Section 3, relating to powers and duties of the President, Article 1, Section 8H, and Article 3, Section 4B, to adjust cross-references.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no, motion passes. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R-143 on tonight's agenda for final action. R-143 appropriates funds to the Office of the Mayor in FY19 to provide humanitarian support for international migrants transitioning through Albuquerque to sponsors across the country.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And raise your hand, oppose, oppose, no. Motion passes.
Counselor.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing RA-3 on tonight's agenda for final action. RA-3 is amending the City Council Rules and Procedures, Article 2, Section 7, dealing with the amendments and floor substitutes provisions of the City Council Procedures.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no, motion passes. Counselor Borrego.
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
There's a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no, motion passes. Next, we are on item eight, reports of committee, there are none. Next, deferrals and withdrawals, Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Seeing none, we are on item nine, consent agenda, are there any changes to the consent For the individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a border commission, please stand if you are in the audience. Ah, Waylon Chavez, well, thank you for your willingness to serve, we really appreciate you being here this evening, thanks, Waylon. Counselor Borrego.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no, motion passes, thank you. Now, we are on item 14, final actions. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry. Thank you, Madam President. R-143 appropriates funds to the Office of the Mayor in FY19 to provide humanitarian support for international migrants transiting through Albuquerque to sponsors across the country. I move a due pass.
There's a motion and a second for a due pass. I think we will get started with the public comment. We have several people signed up to speak this evening, so under.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Counselor Davis.
I'm Gibson.
I mean Gibson, sorry.
But I still have an amendment. So, do you want, we can move.
You have an amendment. Do you want to move the amendment? Sure.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So, this is in your iPad's bill book, and I'll go ahead and read it. On page one, line two, strike the term Office of the Mayor and replace with Chief Administrative Office. On page two, lines nine through 10, strike the term Mayor's Office and replace with Chief Administrative Office. On page two, line 11, strike the term Office of the Mayor and replace with Chief Administrative Office. And then on page two, delete lines 12 through 13 and renumber subsequent sections as necessary. So, what this amendment does is it does transfer the $250,000 appropriation from the Mayor's Office to the Chief Administration Office, as this is a department that will be administering the funds. And the other thing that it does, it removes the funding, this is a funding source for a coordinator. City has a coordinator now that we can certainly utilize for this very important appropriation. And essentially, it will just ensure that the full $250,000 goes towards the goods and services necessary for asylum seekers. So, I'm going to move, I move the amendment.
And I will second that amendment as a co-sponsor.
So, Counselor Harris.
Yeah, just perhaps I'll ask the Chief Administrative Officer what he thinks. It just seems odd that everything's kind of under the mayor anyway, so I'm confused about the purpose of the amendment and its function, I guess.
Madam President and Counselor Harris, the Chief Administrative Office has its own budget, and this would obviously have it reviewed by the CAO's office, which is where most of the operational issues reside. Additionally, with, we already have a staff person that's devoted time to many of these issues, and we would support the amendment simply because it does ensure that the funds go to the providers outside the government of this government structure.
Thank you. So, there's a motion and a second by both Counselor Sanchez and Gibson for their amendment to R-143. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We're back on the bill, so now we will go to public comment, where you will have, I think we have over 45 speakers this evening. You will have a minute and a half. And our first speaker is Archbishop John Wester, Felipe Rodriguez, and Celia Yapita. If you can make your way to the front, so we can save on time.
Thank you very much, Council President Penya, council members. Several months ago, Bishop Mark Seitz called me from El Paso, Texas, to say that he needed our help in terms of taking care of so many immigrants coming into our country. I said yes, of course, and knew, though, that this enormous project would need a lot of help. So, I was worried, but not need to be worried, because as you can see, we have so many people spontaneously come forward to help our immigrants coming into Albuquerque. I'm certainly grateful to Jim Gannon and Catholic Charities, and all my brothers and sisters in various churches, civic people, the businesses, private citizens, not-for-profits who've come forward to help our immigrants. And also, the city of Albuquerque has been extremely helpful, and for that, we're very grateful. I want to stress that this is really a staggering problem. There are currently over 900,000 people awaiting court cases here who've come across the border. Their detention facilities are overwhelmed, and we're all overwhelmed. I don't need to go into the terrible reality in Central America. You know what that is. It's a very just cause. All of these brothers and sisters are acting legally. As Manu Yagani said, a Houston immigration attorney, the law permits them to seek asylum like any other refugee in the world. And so, I know time is very limited, but I just want to say that even if they weren't in the law, and they are, we would still need to help them because of the terrible atrocities they're experiencing. Thank you to Albuquerque for what you've done thus far, and we pray that you'll be able to continue that help with this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Archbishop. Felipe Rodriguez. Please, if you can hold your applause. Felipe Rodriguez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Felipe, and I came to the U.S. seven years ago, running from violence in my country, and I came to Albuquerque. When I came, I was welcomed by a community with open arms and a community that supported me. Seven years now, today, I graduated from UNM, and I work as the campaign manager for the New Mexico Dream Team. And I wouldn't be here, and I wouldn't be the person that I am if I didn't receive that support. So, it feels really special to me, living in a community and a city that when our federal government is doing everything to keep asylum seekers from coming, we're stepping up and providing the, providing people with the needs that they have, and helping them get to our final destination. Thank you so much for considering this resolution. Our community has decided to step up and provide this. Today, we're asking for your help to make this effort sustainable. Thank you so much, and I hope you vote in favor of the resolution.
Thank you. Celia Yapita, followed by Father Joseph Brighten, followed by Rabbi Harry Rosenfeld.
Madam Chair and members of the council, my name is Celia. I'm the Chief Program Officer with Catholic Charities. Any Catholic Charities volunteers in the room who have helped us, please stand and join me. On Saturday, February 16th, we received that call from Archbishop Wester, and we stood up and we helped. But we did not call on our case managers at Catholic Charities, because they do direct services work to the Catholic community every, I mean, to the Albuquerque community every day. And we did not want to draw away anybody who was already helping our refugees, the hungry, anyone else. So, this was not an either-or decision we had to make. We decided to do both. We decided to continue the work that we've been doing to help our community already, in addition to helping the asylees. So, we've helped almost 700 people at this point, and we need your help to do more. All the volunteers who are standing, many, many more, have put in so much time to this effort. So, just as Las Cruces and Santa Fe have supported their community in helping asylee families, we are now asking the city of Albuquerque to stand up and support the volunteers, the community organizations, the faith communities, everyone standing here, and so many beyond, so that we can continue to do this work every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Father Joseph Brighten, and I just want to say that I apologize, but there is no applause, and there's no standing during public comment, no signs. We have a whole gamut of rules. We had some stuff happen a few years back, so I would just appreciate you following the rules. Thank you, Father.
I'm Joseph Brighton, the rector of St. Michael and All Angels Episcopal Church here in Albuquerque, and I'm speaking both on behalf of the parish and of the Episcopal Diocese of the Rio Grande, which covers all of New Mexico and Texas west of the Pecos. We've been at the forefront of taking asylum seekers from ICE and providing them with the resources to go on to the sponsors that receive them and allow them to be pursuing their case in this country. I just want to give you one image that might help you think about this question, and that is that if we were on a boat at sea, and we came across another boat that had shipwrecked, we would feel some immediate sense of moral obligation to reach out and to take on the person who was shipwrecked, regardless of whether the persons on our own boat were in need of certain sustenance, or whether there was room on the boat. We would feel that there was no question that that was necessary to do, and I think that's the situation we're in now. We've come across people who've been shipwrecked by their life, and it's up to us to reach out and sustain them and rescue them. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi.
I'm Rabbi Harry Rosenfeld of Congregation Albert. I'm here with our site coordinator, Jessica Corley, and other volunteers who will not stand. For Jews, welcoming and caring for the stranger is among our highest obligations. Fifty-two times, from Genesis through Deuteronomy, God commands us to welcome the stranger, because we were strangers in the land of Egypt, and therefore know the heart of the stranger. Throughout Jewish history, we have been turned away, even from these shores, to face death and destruction from the places we came. We have a moral obligation to make sure that those who feel the need to find the safety of these shores are welcomed. As a community, we have the same obligation to welcome the stranger, especially those who are here legally coming to our country, looking for asylum from the horrors they face at home. Albuquerqueans, New Mexicans, and others from around our nation have been generous with their time and financial resources, but it's not enough. So, I'm asking that you please approve the allocation of $250,000, which will help fill any gaps over the next months. Thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you. Next, we have Reverend Roger Scott Powers, followed by Eleanor Milroy, followed by Sarah Keeney, followed by Carrie Coffin.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Roger Scott Powers. I'm the pastor at St. Andrew Presbyterian Church and leader in Albuquerque Interfaith. I urge you to vote in favor of this $250,000 in funding to support the efforts of congregations and nonprofit agencies working with asylum seekers transiting through Albuquerque. Some say that the city can't afford to put resources toward asylum seekers, because we already have a homeless population to care for. I would argue that we have to do both. Every Sunday, our congregation serves a hot lunch to 25 to 45 people who are hungry and/or homeless in our city, living on the margins. In addition, we offer sack lunches, clothing, and personal hygiene kits. And we've been doing this for years, and we're going to continue to do it. But that doesn't mean we turn our backs on asylum seekers fleeing for their lives, who are seeking refuge in our country. God calls us to welcome the stranger, even to treat immigrants as if they were fellow citizens, in Leviticus 19. And so, in addition to helping those who are homeless and hungry in our city, St. Andrew Presbyterian Church has stepped up to welcome asylum seekers as well. We've donated almost $3,000 to help provide temporary housing to asylum seekers. We've donated clothes and other needed items, and members of our congregation have put in long hours arranging for temporary housing, coordinating volunteers, and sorting donated clothes. Congregations and nonprofit agencies cannot continue to do this alone, relying solely on the goodwill and generosity of volunteers and private donations. Please help.
Thank you, Reverend Eleanor Milroy. And I apologize if I massacre anyone's name. It won't be the first. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Eleanor Milroy, a member of St. Andrew Presbyterian Church, and a co-site director for the Albuquerque Interfaith and Dream Team Asylee. To date, we have received and aided over 700 asylees. The "we" is over 200 volunteers who do whatever it takes to support our neighbors from the South. The theme we use is "Welcome the Stranger, for They Are Us." Why are they coming? One mother had an adult son who had a tire repair business in Honduras. He, through his business, was ordered to pay the gang's protection money, or his younger sister would be forced into their prostitution ring. It was at that point that the mother and her daughter left Honduras and headed north. Another man left Guatemala because the omnipresent drug cartel attempted to recruit him and a friend. His friend refused to join them, and as a result of that refusal, was publicly raped in the Village Plaza. And a brief story about one of our volunteers. I know she has a job in school aged children, yet she's always helping. So, I ask, why? Are you willing to spend so much time? And she answers, "I brought my son here at the age of two months. He was deported when he was 18. I do this here, because I need people to do for him there. Welcome the stranger, for they are us."
Sarah Keeney, followed by Carrie Coffin, followed by Timothy Saina, followed by Mang Graves.
Madam President and councilors, my name is Sarah Keeney, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm co-clerk of the Albuquerque Monthly Meeting of the Religious Society of Friends, which means a Quaker. And we worship in a small meeting house in the Wells Park neighborhood, but a number of our group have done the work of meeting these buses, joining the various teams that are around here. And some of them might want to wave. I don't know if that's okay. And providing support to families as they take this last step of their difficult journey to stay with their approved sponsors around the country. And we've seen over and over the faces that reflect desperation, humility, gratitude from these people, our neighbors, who are in need, and our hearts have been touched. So, we've done this out of the basic teachings of our religion, simple messages as do unto others, and welcome the stranger. But also, as part of our longstanding testimony as a meeting here in Albuquerque in support of people who come to the United States seeking safety from violence in their home countries. And our meeting has approved various public statements on the topic of immigration and sanctuary from the 1980s on to the present. I'm not going to read them right now, but I would provide them if you're interested. In, as of 2014, we pledge our strength and light to work with people of goodwill, to assure that the humanity of every migrant coming to our borders is honored, and that all are treated with compassion and dignity. Please help us with this funding from the government.
Thank you. Carrie Coffin, Timothy Saina.
Madam President, members of the council, my name is Gary Coffin. I am a vice president and co-founder of Indivisible Nob Hill. I'm also a Navy veteran and a second-year law student at UNM. I'm here to offer my support for the resolution that will appropriate money to help support our great community organizations who are leading these efforts. As many of you know, Indivisible Nob Hill is a political organization. Our goal is to educate the greater public and effectuate political change where we can. When we learned of this issue back in March, we immediately began to search and learn, why has this happened? What can we do? And where can we lend our support? To summarize what I have learned, Border Patrol and ICE are releasing these travelers after they have been vetted and screened. These releases are happening in greater numbers, and Washington has approved these releases. Since then, the policy behind the releases has changed, and Washington has approved releases of asylees to our streets. This has begun happening in Las Cruces. The only reason why Albuquerque has not experienced a direct release to our city streets is that we have five terrific community organizations that voluntarily stepped up to relieve pressure from the detention facilities operated by Border Patrol and ICE. Keep in mind, this has been going on for Albuquerque for three months. We would have all been here a lot earlier, talking about how to appropriate money, if it was not for these organizations that have lended their efforts. Just for some numbers, just to review real quick, Las Cruces has processed about 2,500 asylees in the past three months. Albuquerque has processed over 2,200. Las Cruces has just appropriated half a million dollars. We're looking for a quarter million. Let's do the right thing and support our organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Timothy. I'm not even going to try your name.
Hi. Timothy Saina. That's my name, and I'm a member of First Congregational United Church of Christ, and I'd just like to share a 30-second story with you, that I think shows the heart of the people who are here asking for a little bit of help. A few years after he opened an enunciation house in El Paso, Ruben Garcia said that a destitute mother from Mexico with two sick children showed up one day at his door. She collapsed on the floor outside his office, and he took the family in. A few days later, when Garcia got a call looking for someone to clean a house, he asked the mother whether she wanted the job. When she returned at the end of the day, she showed him the money she'd earned, $15. "She gave me the $10 and told me to save it for her," Garcia said. Then she gave me the $5 and told me to give it to someone who might need it more, who was even poorer than she was. That, Garcia said, was one of the biggest donations we'd ever received. I hope that the city of Albuquerque has a heart to match this woman's. Thank you.
Thank you. Marge Graves, followed by Lance Senna, followed by Michelle Benton, followed by. Marge Graves, followed by Lan Senna, followed by Michelle Benton, followed by Carla Lanting Shibuga.
My name is Mary Graves, and I'm from St. Paul Lutheran Church in Albuquerque and have been volunteering with both Catholic Charities and Albuquerque Interfaith for several months as a nurse healthcare provider. I've met 10 to 12 busloads of parents and children, and they are now no longer people crowded behind a chain-linked fence on our southern border. They are no longer nameless and faceless people on the evening news. People all over this city and the surrounding area are providing for their needs, and for several days, the volunteer commitment has been incredible. But in order to continue, we must have financial support from this community in order to be sustainable. One evening, I was working alone when a mother came carrying her 11-year-old son who was crying with painful feet and refusing to walk. I took his shoes off and saw that his feet were filled with deep cracks and the skin was peeling off with a horrible odor. Did he need antibiotics? Does he need further medical care or what? I had never seen or smelled skin like this. I turned around to see a man and woman coming down the hallway who came to fill backpacks for people who were traveling the next day. He said to me, "I don't know where to find the list and what to put in the backpacks." Well, I said, "I don't know. I have a problem too." I said, "There's a little boy whose feet are painful and look terrible, and I don't know exactly what treatment he needs." And the man said, "Don't worry, I'm a doctor. Let's go take a look together." Together, we decided he could be treated with over-the-counter skin ointment, which had been donated. And he was able to travel with his mom the next day. This is the kind of compassionate care provided by the medical volunteers every day in this city. As Martin Luther King said, "One comes to appreciate the reality that there can be no 'we' and 'they' in our lives. It must be only brothers and sisters, and all are sacred and dignified." Thank you.
Thank you. Lan Senna.
Madam President and members of the council, my name is Lan Senna with the Asian Pacific American Caucus. I'm here in support of Resolution 143. In the words of late Senator Edward Kennedy, "There is no more enduring theme in our nation's history than our tradition of compassion and humanitarian concern for the homelessness of the world. The new arrivals from Indo-China remind us once again that we are a nation of immigrants and refugees, and that much of our heritage has been built upon the lives and spirit of those who have come to our shores, seeking hope and freedom and an opportunity to build new lives in a new land. At the same time, however, we are also reminded of the hurdles and challenges and difficulties that all refugees and immigrants face in the beginning of a new life, and to help and understanding the need to help themselves." This address was delivered to Congress in July of 24 of 1975. However, New Mexico was already acting out the spirit of Senator Kennedy's sentiment. In July of 1975, New Mexico was receiving families of refugees and immigrants. In 1975, New Mexico and Albuquerque saw the need that families, in fact, within thousands -- within weeks, thousands of refugees arrived to Albuquerque's Sunport. The Indo-China Refugee Resettlement Program was run by the state, providing housing, clothing, pots, pans, and job training. APS teachers learned Vietnamese phrases to help new students feel more welcomed. Albuquerque residents gave their new neighbors bicycles, packed lunch, gave clothes because they knew this was the spirit of Albuquerque. These refugee families went on to become great members of Albuquerque, from small business owners, poets, artists, doctors, and activists, just as all refugees and immigrant families before them. With that, I ask you in support of today's resolution, as it goes far beyond what -- or we have gone far beyond what we have done before. Thank you.
Michelle Benton, followed by Carla Lanting.
Good evening, Madam President and councilmembers. I support this funding to provide humanitarian support for people traveling through Albuquerque. I want to thank the organizations who have already been providing help with migrants passing through. Lutheran Family Services, Catholic Charities, Albuquerque Interfaith, Indivisible Nob Hill, and many others. This funding measure can help all residents of Albuquerque who have wholeheartedly donated their time and money to assist the process of feeding and temporarily housing people on their way. The sooner they can be reunited with their families, the better. We in Albuquerque are just beginning to do our part to join Las Cruces and El Paso in this humanitarian mission. By having city help, we can make this process even more efficient. If anyone has doubts, please consider that these are mothers, fathers, and children who have traveled thousands of miles to legally apply for asylum, and they need temporary assistance. This is a sign of a strong community, how you treat the weakest among us. The citizens of Albuquerque and New Mexico have already shown how welcoming we can be. Please pass this funding now so you can join us doing the best we possibly can in this difficult situation. This is the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carla.
Hello. My name is Carla Lanting Shibuya.
I would have never got that.
I am from St. Therese Parish, and I am a co-site director with Albuquerque Interfaith. I also represent Catholic worker communities in New Mexico. In the necessary debates and discussions surrounding the crisis at the border, it is easy to forget the ordinary faces and the ordinary lives impacted and played by the political and economic history and maneuverings that led to and inform our current situation. I have stories that I have slashed to save time. One person, though, I think is emblematic for what I want to say, John, who works in Albuquerque, who stopped to ask me one day when the 300 people had arrived. He said, "What is going on?" And when I told him of the asylee effort, he emptied his wallet. He gave me all the cash he had, and then came back with his wife and family with dinner enough to feed over 50 people. He said, as a boy walked past, "That was me. He is me. There are no strangers in this effort. Asylum seekers, advocates, volunteers, a good man doing his job and stopping to help, we suddenly see and recognize ourselves in each other. I invite all of us to carefully look around this room, if that's allowed, recognize --[1055.48][1055.48](Laughter) -- recognize that we are each other's keepers. Council members, please help us to do what we are already doing, what we will continue to do for ourselves and each other in Albuquerque and beyond any border. Pass Resolution R. 19143 and join us as we live our present and our future with mercy, with justice, and with joy. Thank you."
Thank you. Mr. Rudolph Serano, followed by Peter Collins, followed by Reverend Stephanie Kremel, followed by Reverend Steve Chavis.
Counselor Clarissa, members of the councils Albuquerque, New Mexico, you spend $1 billion a year in street drugs, and you give it to immigrants that come to give you drugs. Can you give a quarter of a million for those ones that come to sweat for you? Can you give a quarter of a million to those that come and make sure your green chili and red chili enchiladas get to your table? Because we already planted seeds. Who's going to pick them up? We pick them up. We pick them up, we harvest them, we take them to the truck, we process them in the restaurant, we cook them for you, we serve them in your table, and we wash the dishes after. We care of your children. We change their diapers. I don't know why you get married anymore. We do everything for you.[1147.83][1147.83](Laughter). Reality.
Sorry.
Reality, we do all this for you, and these people are coming to work. We don't have 2 million Mexicans coming because we treat them like -- and now we're bringing them from El Salvador. But they're coming to work. We call this a crisis, immigrant crisis, so we treat them like slaves, and so we don't pay them fair salaries. That's the reality of what's going on, and we don't have to be part of it. We don't have to be part of Trump and his employees. Actually, these are his employees. Thank you very much.
Peter Collins, followed by Reverend Stephanie Kremel, followed by Steve Chavis. Reverend Steve Chavis.
Madam President and councilmembers, thank you for taking time to listen to all of us. I think most of us in this room cannot conceive what would motivate us to pick up and walk from here, our home, to Detroit or to Madison, Wisconsin, the distance that many of the asylum seekers have walked to get to our border and seek asylum. They're here legally. I think by spending this money, Albuquerque takes one more step in becoming the kind of city that we want to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President and councilmembers, thank you for your time. I am Reverend Stephanie Kremel, a pastor at First Presbyterian Church Albuquerque. I'm here speaking on behalf of Lutheran Family Services, one of the key organizations doing this work, and they haven't made a presence here this evening because we actually received a bus at 3:00. And so they are hard at work. We're five volunteers short. I have a feeling they might be here, and that's okay because this is important work. Erin DeBai, the program director for Lutheran Family Services, while doing intake and travel forms, wrote out a statement for me to share on their behalf, and he writes, "As the state of New Mexico's Refugee Resettlement Center, Lutheran Family Services fully supports the passing of R. 143. As our organizations work tirelessly every week to support the asylum seekers, we need more help. This is not a political issue. This is a humanitarian issue. New Mexico and the United States have always welcomed the stranger with open arms and the promise of safety from violence and discrimination. So let's practice this longtime American tradition by welcoming the stranger once again." Thank you.
Reverend Steve Chavis, followed by Rosemary Blanchard, followed by Flora. So it doesn't appear -- so Rosemary Blanchard? So it looks like Reverend Steve Chavis is not here. Is that correct? Rosemary's making her way down, so -- and then we have Flora, followed by Representative Patricia Roybal Caballero.
Hello, Madam President and members of the council. My name is Rosemary Blanchard, and I am the chair of the Albuquerque chapter of the United Nations Association USA. And I'm here on behalf of UNA ABQ and myself to encourage the council to complete this good work that has been started with this resolution and with the mayor's office, to help, to protect, do what is our local responsibility under treaties we have signed at the national level, but that we have to carry out at the local level, to uphold the human rights of the asylum seekers who come to our border because they have a right to leave where they are at risk and to find a place where they can safely -- where they can safely live and raise their families, contribute, and not have to face the death threats, the violation of self-threats that they have been experiencing. This is the city of Albuquerque saying, "We respect the human rights of these asylum seekers, and we will help them on their journey, to their sponsors and to the cases that they hopefully will be fairly considered within." Thank you so much.
Thank you. And yes, it was written down wrong, so it's Father Chavis.
Stephen's my brother and Donna's my cousin.[1497.42][1497.42](Laughter). Cinco de Mayo mariachis, what a theme here tonight. President Peña, dear councilors, I am Father Vincent Chavis from St. Therese and Albuquerque The response from people of goodwill here in Albuquerque has been overwhelming, and the donations even from across the country to our efforts here in Albuquerque have been overwhelming. We become a great city by caring for others. Come and volunteer yourselves at the sites and see the transfiguration of people getting off of the buses, worn and weary and dirty and dehydrated and hungry. And after two, three days with us, their dignity restored, they become transfigured before our eyes. Thank you, councilors, for your support, your hearts, and your souls in this effort.
Thank you. Flora.
Hi, I'm Flora Yerxa.
I did want to say it.
Madam President Peña and Madam Vice President Borrego, it is an honor to acknowledge that in New Mexico history, you are the first Hispanic women to hold these posts. Thank you. Absolutely. And I am so sorry that no one in the public eye has chosen to celebrate or even mention this. Thank you so much for breaking that glass ceiling. The council is asking for what amounts to the cost of one middle-class home to help hundreds of people. Shame on any one of us who calls ourselves Christians and people of God, and we turn our neighbors away. Those neighbors are also very well-versed on the principles of Jesus. Please don't fear that we are running out of resources. We are not. Within my home, there are food banks, there are clothing banks, there is the housing authority. Don't give in to fear, please. These are humans that need help, and we are able to help them. We just are. It is not a matter of whether we can or can't. We are a rich state. We may not allocate stuff quite well sometimes.[1659.24][1659.24](Laughter). But it is there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Representative Patricia Roybal Caballero, followed by Lisa Lucero, followed by Beatrice Valencia.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question. I have a few words to say in Spanish as well. Do I use the same amount of time?
You can have the additional time.
Thank you very much. So, thank you again, Madam President and members of the council. Soy Patricia Roybal Caballero, representante estatal del distrito 13 en Albuquerque. Quiero que sepan todas las familias que están pasando, que los estamos apoyando, y para nosotros nuestra prioridad es asegurar que sus pasajes como refugiados sean protegidos sin que tengan temor que los regresen a las condiciones que escaparon. Estamos en solidaridad con inmigrantes y refugiados siempre. Good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Roybal Caballero, and I am a state representative representing District 13 here in Albuquerque. I would like to thank the council and ask for your approval of this resolution, which will provide critical assistance to the families seeking safe passage through our city while en route to meet other family members and seek asylum here in the United States. As many of you know, I led a humanitarian envoy from New Mexico to El Paso Torneo to give witness to the inhumane detention of children and to submit a formal human rights violation complaint to the United Nations and to the Vatican. Not surprisingly, we were denied entry to the Torneo facility. However, we did visit with Annunciation House, and we delivered very needed items donated and gathered by many New Mexican communities around the state, which were presented to Ruben Garcia, director of the Annunciation House. Mr. Garcia is a lifelong associate of mine and has been a fierce supporter of immigrant and refugee rights. and refugee rights, establishing Annunciation House over 40 years ago. I am proud to have worked with him and continue my association in support of his efforts. I know that with this resolution and help, we are lifting a load from Annunciation House and their many tireless volunteers, and we give them solace in knowing their care and concern is shared by their New Mexico friends and families. Thank you for your approval of this resolution and for your generosity, compassion, and leadership during this humanitarian crisis. We are certainly demonstrating to the world that we, the people, are standing in solidarity with our immigrant and refugee families and building our own walls of protection from hate, repression, and undue hardship while these families journey, seeking freedom and justice from oppression. As our former President Barack Obama said, "Let us not lead by the example of power, but by the power of example." Thank you, and thank you for your passage of this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative. Thanks for all you do. Next speaker is Lisa Lucero.
Hello, I'm Lisa Lucero from the Bernalillo Luceros. I'm honored to be here, thank you. And I just...I have...I too have been to Torneo and have seen the children who have been separated and locked up and imprisoned there. And it's...I just want to say, what side of history do you want to be on? You know, what...this is the time that we make a stand of what...and show which side of history do we want to be on that side? You know, the pictures of Martin Luther King, and do you want to be on the side of them marching with him or those fighting and saying hateful words? Do you want to be on the side of the slave owners or the abolitionists? Which side? This is the time, you know, that we're here to stand. And I do want to say, and I did tell the lady out front, I don't live in Albuquerque, I live in Corales. But we are getting ready to feed the asylum seekers on Friday, my group, and I could tell you that there's people that live in...that are going to be coming from Rio Rancho, a group of women from Jemez Pueblo. We have donations from Belen, and so people care. There's people who have...you know, we are good people at heart. It's like what Anne Frank said, "I still believe that people are good at heart." So let's show that. We are good people.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero from Bernalillo.
Hello, good morning, Madam President from the council and council. My name is Beatrice Valencia. I come here as a community member and as part of Albuquerque Interfaith and in support of all these nonprofits who already have done a wonderful job by dealing with the situation. At the same time, I want to say that I had been volunteering for a short period of time compared with many of the others because I work full-time. But at the same time, I saw so many families and kids going through a situation that I feel very identified with. Do you know why? I'm a Latina that is an immigrant myself, and I saw these type of things happening in my country. When I was a kid, I was not able to do anything about it. But here in the U.S., you have the possibility to do something. With all these people, all in orange, that means humanity, by the ones who don't know in marketing. Yes, so...so I just appeal to you that this is very important to proceed and make it happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Coy Griffin, followed by Nick Lehman, followed by Downey X, followed by Steve Morrison.
Madam President, councilors, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Coy Griffin, and I'm the Chairman of the Otero County Board of Commissioners in Otero County. Recently, we moved and passed on a resolution that ensured the taxpayers of our county that their tax dollars would not go to support the illegal immigrants or asylum seekers that are coming into the county.
No, 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 no. No, wait. Excuse me, we have to respect everyone's opinion. I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that, Madam Counselor. But recently, we did move and pass on a resolution to protect the taxpayer, taxpaying citizens' money inside of our county. But we didn't do it because we don't have a heart of compassion. We do have a heart of compassion. We do want to help people, but we want to make sure the people of our county are helped first. In New Mexico today, New Mexico leads the nation in child hunger. And today in New Mexico, in Albuquerque, your city was recently voted the eighth most dangerous city in America. Albuquerque, New Mexico, leads the nation in auto theft. You guys have serious systematic problems inside of your community, inside of your city that you need to deal with. Many that we've heard here today have been from the church community, and I appreciate their compassion. I appreciate their willingness and wanting to help people. But the compassion needs to come from the church because there is a separation between church and state. I'm a former pastor. I'm a born-again Christian. I love people and I want to help people, but there's a separation of church and state, and the money that you guys have been entrusted with is taxpayer-citizens' money.
Thank you.
So please direct it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And stay strong.
Mr. Nick Lehman.
Counsel and Council President, I'm here to speak on how bad of an idea this is for the city. This room is full of many nonprofits that have stepped up. I think when I drove here, I saw many tents and homeless camps. The street corners are full of panel handlers asking motorists for a few bucks. We failed in providing care to Albuquerque residents. The more appropriate use of funds is to help Albuquerque residents with child hunger, giving adequate access to educational programs, making sure our elderly have their next meal, and providing veterans who have fallen on tough times. All the things I have mentioned, New Mexico is at the bottom of the list. I've seen New Mexico's county, cities, and state resources spread thin because of over 175,000 people being processed and released by Immigration and Customs in New Mexico cities. Many of the services in the state are being pushed to the max without any guarantee that the money will be recouped by this border crisis. Higher taxes and spending is imminent with this. It is a very sad and concerning that men and women that are living below the poverty level that call Albuquerque home cannot get much notice from elected officials. I would like to see the mayor and city council make a big deal over these tent neighborhoods as they're making over the people crossing our borders. The decision on the border crisis has not been thoroughly debated. There's many public safety and health issues and financial issues that have not been discussed. Please vote against this measure. There hasn't been a proper debate with all people coming to the side. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Downey X.
Good afternoon. I heard the mayor's call for help, and I volunteered with Catholic Charities. Most of the families, almost all of them coming, it's one parent and one or two children. They don't have the money to bring the entire family, and they know that if they have a child, they have a better case for asylum. I have a wife and kids. I cannot imagine the family conversation to decide which parent and which child to take on a one-way journey with the hope of someday being reunited. I speak Spanish. I've been working with the people and talking to the people. I've heard so many stories. A man and his 13-year-old son stuffed with 150 other people in the back of a semi-truck for four days to travel across Mexico. A woman whose daughter slept on her under the bridge in El Paso because the night before she received bruises while she slept on the rocks. We helped find baby formula for a woman whose two-month-old baby, she couldn't breastfeed anymore because she was so malnourished. At the risk of alienating my friends in orange shirts, I want to go on the record. I am a registered Republican. I'm a social conservative. I'm white, obviously. This should not be a political issue. This is a human issue.
Next speaker is David Cole, followed by Misha...I don't know what that says. Is Mr. Cole here? David Cole? And then the next speaker looks like Misha Ella Gallegos, followed by Justin Rogers. David, there's no David?
Madam President and City Councils, thank you for all the help today. My name is Nora Hernandez. I'm part of New Mexico Dream Team. First of all, I want to thank all of you guys that are in support of this resolution. Thank you. Thank you so much. New Mexico Dream Team and Pat Davis created this resolution because we saw...we saw the eyes of all those kids. We saw the eyes of all these people that have seen helping and supporting beautiful children, beautiful people that is just asking for help. They are truly running away from their countries, not because they want to, but because they need to save their lives. If you hear all the stories that I have here, you won't hesitate on vote yes on this resolution. I want to ask all the people that have heard any bad story of all these people, raise your hand. And you know, you know it's true. You know that we need this help, and please, please say yes to all these efforts for all these people. Say yes to this resolution of Pat Davis and say yes to these people that really need our help. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next speaker is Michaela Gallegos, followed by Justin Rogers, followed by Chris Lareñaga, followed by Kathy Esquivel Baca.
Good evening. I'll be fast because I have very antsy little guys. My name is Michaela Gallegos. Thank you for the opportunity to bring my children and be here and represent a family in Albuquerque. I have been following what's been happening with the asylum seekers for a long time, starting back last year. I am both proud of all of the nonprofits, faith organizations, and ordinary citizens who have stepped up and helped. Thank you. I'll try to...I am a taxpayer. I'm a single parent, so everything is stretched thin. I understand budgets, and I applaud the city of Albuquerque for opening up and allocating this money. This is not...this is a humane decision. This is a moral decision, and I am proud to say I live in Albuquerque, I am a New Mexican, and we are doing the right thing. I ask you to please support the resolution. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Justin Rogers, followed by Chris Lareñaga.
Thank you, Madam President and the council. A couple weeks ago, I saw a call on Facebook from Indivisible Nob Hill that they were doing a training for how to help out asylum seekers. And so having a bit of free time on that Friday, I went to the training. It was a room packed with people, with people from Albuquerque who were looking for a way to help. Two days later, on Easter Sunday, I found myself helping out a group of arriving refugees on a bus. I volunteered to help with the intake and hospitality, porque hablo un poquito de español. And I met lots of people. They were tired. They were...they needed food, water, clean clothes, a bath, but they were hopeful and they were grateful for what the city was doing for them. In particular, I spent a while talking with a boy who I'll call Rogelio. He's 16 years old, and he had made this journey with his father, who not only didn't speak English, but barely spoke Spanish. Rogelio was translating between English, Spanish, and I believe it was Quechua, was the indigenous language. When they went to go get new clothes, Rogelio picked out a UNM hat, and I asked him if he knew what that was. He didn't, so I told him, "It's a university here." I asked him if, you know, you're 16, are you interested in going to university? He says it wasn't something he had really thought of, but he would love to. He'd love to see what it was like in the U.S. and would like to study math or science. So I believe that some people want us to think that immigrants are a burden on us, but I think it's an opportunity. I think they're a benefit to our society. People like Rogelio will stay and contribute back to us for everything we give to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Lareñaga, Kathy Esquivel Baca, David Odegaard.
Thank you, Madam Chair Peña. Thank you, Counselor Davis, for the Resolution 19...I'm sorry, Resolution 19-143. I'm here on behalf of Southwest Organizing Project, SWAP, but I've worked side by side with Albuquerque Interfaith. Love you, Eleanor Melroy. I'm sure that's you. You know, but, you know, even if I wasn't coming, you know, on behalf of SWAP though, I would be doing this as a concerned citizen. I carry with me the Rogerian theory, which is unconditional positive regard, empathy, and doing it in a genuine manner. Just a quick story, you know, I've helped these individuals, and specifically, there was one man that was from Honduras, and I asked him, you know, ¿qué está pasando en su país? ¿Por qué viene para acá? Y este hombre dijo, "No hay ayuda en mi país, no hay trabajo, ya no podemos trabajar en la tierra." Okay? So that...so just the translation there is, we can no longer even work with our, you know, with...in the dirt with our hands, and that's really, really kind of concerning too. But...and I also want to just kind of stress this too. I don't feel that the heavy lifting should continue to be carried by organizations like...I mean, they're doing the heavy lifting. Albuquerque Interfaith, Catholic Charities, Indivisible Nob Hill. So I ask you, council members, to please support Resolution R-19143. Thank you, Counselor Davis.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the council, thank you very much for listening to all of us. I propose three ways to look at the issue of asylums in Albuquerque. There's...first of all, there's a national policy in place that often is a daily-moving target that border cities and states have to deal with. We have an influx of mothers, fathers, and children legally applying for asylum, and they have nothing but the shirt on their backs as they are released from detention into the streets. No matter where one stands politically, the efficient, safe, and fiscally responsible way to deal with this reality is to support this proposal, and all the groups that have been doing things so far, processing our guests as they continue on the journey to their sponsors across the country. This has been done by a coalition of faith groups, community, and grassroots organizations, and they have stepped in, and continued support of these efforts will cost much less than the alternative. There's also another way to unite Albuquerque and be proud of our city. We are giving city, and these groups refine and get better with each time that they deal with the asylums. It's been incredible to watch from a system standpoint, medical, legal, food, the New Mexico Dream Team, all face, all ages, working together to provide this much-needed service. I've been so proud to live in Albuquerque these last few months. This collaboration is already having ripple effects that will continue to benefit Albuquerque for a long time. Please support this as we move forward.
Thank you. David Odegaard, Patricia Chavez, Sarah Namaste.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Odegaard. I am a member of St. Michael's who took 84...excuse me, 82 asylum seekers yesterday, and I'm also an attorney, but not an immigration attorney. I volunteer my time to help these asylum seekers, in part because they've come here legally, and they have an opportunity for due process through the immigration courts to have their asylum request heard. During that time, our job is to ensure that they get to their sponsors and to provide them basic medical care. But it's important to understand that we have to assist them in their due process right as an individual in this country to have their case heard. I hope that all of you who are concerned... I hope that all of you who are considering this bill have had an opportunity to come to one of these sites, to see the people that are there, to see who we're helping, to see those who need help. And I hope that especially Mr. Harris, who's been unable to be here during this time, uh, consider coming by as well. I thank Counselor Borrego for being present at our site this weekend, um, and I hope that everyone takes the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Patricia Chavis.
Thank you, Chairperson Penya and Vice President Borrego. I'm here representing myself as a small business owner, PLC Enterprises, having lived and worked in this community for years, also as a member of the Volunteer Board under the Mayor's Office, and the Hispanic Heritage Committee of New Mexico. In addition, just recently, we had a citywide recognition of several hundred volunteers, which we called upon to work and to support the asylum seekers here in our great city. Many of those people here today, faith-based communities, Catholic charities, the interfaith communities, rose to the occasion, as I did. And I continue to support the effort by Pat Davis, the City Counselor. I encourage you and ask for your support of this resolution. It is the right thing to do for this community. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Sarah Namaste, followed by Carrie Converse, followed by William U. L. Welling.
Good evening, I'm Saida Namaste. I'm a resident of Albuquerque 13 years, um, a single mom, a taxpayer, and a foster mom. Earlier you were doing appreciation for foster parents, and, um, I volunteer with the asylum seekers since last summer in the Diocese of Las Cruces. I drive down every month, sometimes multiple times a month, to volunteer there and take donations with me. Um, and I'm often picking up children in the shelters, it's, it's all parents with children, um, and they remind me of my foster kids. I've, I've held three-year-olds who cried for their mothers, and their mothers didn't cross with them, and I've seen that pain, and I would love to see my tax money go to this. I know that the money that's being appropriated or being talked about tonight is unallocated funds, it does not take away from our homeless services, it does not take away from other people in our community. That's false, that's not what would happen. Um, and so I think this is a great use of our money, and I think the whole city is behind you. I've taken donations down to Las Cruces shelters from Albuquerque, Santa Fe, Penasco, Dixon, Alvalé, Taos, people want to help and support. There's only so much we can do with things that people have purged from their closets to take down, so we need the city to come forward the way Las Cruces has. I was in Las Cruces the day after Christmas when Immigration and Customs Enforcement's dropped off people, asylum seekers, in the park in the middle of the night, in freezing night, in El Paso, and the city had no way to, to respond. I was in Las Cruces when ICE sent people to the gospel mission, and the city had no way to respond. This is forward-thinking, people are coming to our city, our city should respond, in, with all of us who have been volunteering, with the unallocated funds that will not take away from services from others. So please pass this, thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Converse, followed by William U. L. Welling.
Member Chairman and members of the chambers, my name is Blanca Anillos, and I am here with the New Mexico Dream Team, and this orange right here represents our hard work. We've been working hard to represent our people. The New Mexico Dream Team members know what it's like to lose people to deportation. We know what it's like to see these people suffer in detention centers and seeing them die in detention centers. It is not okay for them to go through this. All their belongings are taken away, their identity cards are taken away, their clothes are taken away, they are not being treated fairly in these detention centers. They are dying constantly, and it is not okay for this to continue to happen. We, as a city of Albuquerque, we need to act upon this, because this detention center here in Sebola has been in charge of a lot of debts that have happened inside this detention center, and it is not okay. So how can we help these people? We can help these people by giving them clothes, water, and helping them get through their journey here in the United States. It is not okay that they continue to die in these detention centers. And a lot of these times, these people die because they're not given the proper healthcare and are simply not be giving water. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you state your name for the record once more, just because I called Carrie Converse, and I don't think, are you speaking on her behalf?
Yeah, Blanca Anillos.
Okay, thank you. William U. L. Welling?
I'll say it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and members, or President and members of the committee, I'm Dr. William Allwelling, uh, past president of the New Mexico Psychiatric Medical Association. There are many volunteer, uh, medical, uh, professionals giving very basic, uh, medical oversight and help to the volunteers, uh, coming through. My point, I guess mainly, was stressing the very basic na- uh, nature of the medical help being given, and the food and water being given to people coming through. It's bare bones, uh, help to these people in tremendous need. It's not like we're, uh, diverting, uh, resources that should be given to, to our people in any significant degree. Um, the other issue is that these people are passing through, the medical help is mainly triaged to make sure that some, someone like an infant with a horrible ear infection will get some antibiotic to make the 50-hour bus journey. Uh, the final issue, I guess, is more a patriotic one. This is the first view of America that these people, uh, will have. Albuquerque will be the first city they see for many of them, and it, I think, we don't have a Statue of Liberty, but it's a powerful symbol of, of the country that they're coming into, that we're able to, to give them, to provide just this basic, uh, good Samaritan level of care that, uh, that this bill would provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Martinez Tad Naminsky.
Kind of afraid to leave here. We had a little, for people that want to be tolerant of other people, they're not very tolerant of my opinion or Koi's opinion. Hi. So I may need an escort out of here. Um, my thing is, is that, um, they're talking like we don't have a heart, that we don't care. What I care about is the 22 veterans a day that commit suicide, that there's no help for them, they have been begging for money, and this city has been silent, this country has been silent. That's what we're talking about, is taking care of our veterans first. Where are all these people when these veterans need food and water and housing and everything else? I'm not saying anything against them, I'm glad that they're doing this, but what I'm saying, what we're saying is that there, we have to take care of us first. There are gangs and everything committing su- committing murders here on children. There's immigrant, illegal immigrants, okay, asylum seekers, that are coming in and raping our children, and they're human traffickers, see what I mean? They have no tolerance for anybody else's voice except for theirs, and that's wrong. That's the heart, when you look at that. This man just told me he hates me because I support Trump, because he's yelling about Koi being a Trumper, and I said, well, I'm a Trumper, if that's what you want to call it. You know who I am? I'm an American, and I have a heart too, just like they do, but I'm more tolerant, and I'm not screaming at them for their views, I'm just saying, help our 22 a day. But there's tens of thousands of people in this state that have signed petitions that are against this orange sea of T-shirts. This is cute, and it's, it's adorable show, but there's hundreds of thousands of people that have signed petitions that are not for this.
Thank you.
Can I get an escort, please?
Mr. Tad Naminsky.
You want to say it to my face? Huh?
Mr. Naminsky.
Thank you. My name Ted Naminsky. I hear homelessness of the world. Is it the United States only one country who has to tolerate all this illegal immigration? So anyway, uh, all these paid people right here, yes, I was born Catholic, but I came here as not through Catholic charities, I reject that. I went different avenue. International Rescue Committee, I chose it, to be independent. Now, this bill, okay, if they wanted help, that's fine, I have no problem, but don't impose to 100,000 people in Albuquerque, don't impose on other people to pay this quarter million dollar bill. That's simple, is that, all this religious denomination right here, they're after this quarter of a million, that's what it's all about it. Well, I don't want to also use, uh, Bill Bulits, Counselor, homosexuality.
Mr. Naminsky, direct your comments towards me, please.
I hear enough of this crap from church, Catholic church, molesting boys and, thank you.
Thank you. Adilias Stitch? Enriquez Cardell? Cardiel? Okay. And how do you pronounce your last name? I think it's kind of written...
I'll pronounce it for you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Councilmembers, my fellow Albuquerqueans, my name is Adilias D. Stith. I grew up in the hood of Baltimore City, Maryland. I know about hard times, I know about racism, I know about discrimination. No one was there for me. I saw people being advanced and people having opportunities, but where was it for me? My voice is for those who are being hungry in this town every single day, and if it were not for APS, and, and, you know, unfortunately, we're coming up on a summer break, if it was not for APS, we would have thousands of children not able to eat because they are going, they're hungry and they're starving at home. We have veterans, I'm a former veteran, my wife served in the United States Air Force for 26 years. Unfortunately, I have to see veterans standing on the corners begging. I have to see veterans and read about them being, being killed and committing suicide, and locking, being locked up, not knowing how to react and respond to PTSD. We have serious problems. How can I be a father? I'm a father of five. How can I take care of my children? Adult take care of my children first, and then take care of someone else's child. How can we be reasonable and responsible adults and leaders and not take care of our own children and those who are going hungry and homeless in our own town, but we're willing to take taxpayer dollars to help someone else? How can we do that?
Thank you. Enriquez Cardell, followed by Renee Ortiz.
Madam Chair, Council, my name is Enrique Cardiel. I'm here as a member of your Community Health Council. Spending money to support the asylum seekers supports a problem, a broader public health approach. Supporting people in crisis now leads to less chronic issues later. We, we can put aside or seek money for various other purposes that we think are normal. We provide a lot of money for overtime police officers, we have funds that we have ready to deal with fires and other kinds of emergencies. This is an unexpected emergency. The situation now is taxing local city staff. As a former government employee, I know what it's like to have to deal with things that are outside of the prescribed budget. This funding will support that staff so that they continue to focus on, um, the needs of Albuquerque, the things that people have been concerned about, while also supporting being able to, uh, deal with this crisis situation. We can do both, it's not an either or, it's an and, and I think that's where we need to go. This partnership with the governor to house people at the fairgrounds shows that when we really want to, we can do a lot more, and I think now is the time to step up, um, as a city, as a community, to make it healthier and safer, um, for everybody. I don't think this is putting one group above another, I don't think we should let ourselves be divided that way. As a public health person, we can figure out how to help everyone. Thank you all for doing this.
Thank you. Renee Ortiz, followed by Terry Runbar. Renee Ortiz. Terry Runbar. It appears they left, so, um, David Bearshield.
Why, hello.
Hello.
You always got to hear from a Native American, and it is very comical to just kind of think about immigrants trying to help immigrants from a Native American standpoint. And it's, it's a different style thing, because I came in, um, and I had a different view on the issue, um, but thanks to Donna outside giving me some real impacting, um, information is that, uh, we could make this political, and we could make this about a Republican thing, and we could make this about a Democratic thing, but we could also look at Albuquerque leading, um, us into some very prevalent areas, because of course we know homelessness is terrible right now, you know, but that's not the issue right now. And right now, the issue right now is about making a moral support. As a Native American, we see government, uh, officials such as myself, being from Tribal Council, a- and going before committees like this, requesting, uh, uh, just chump change for, um, certain issues with regards to native issues that are at hand. But this 250,000, or how much ever is going to be allocated particularly for this, i- is going to be allocated through this area here and given to the charities there, a- and so that they can allocate and make sure that they are taken care of, because it would be easy to attack every last one of you on this issue and take it into a whole different era. But I want to say today that we must take that moral responsibility, that we don't have to continue to be leading in all kinds of horrendous eras in what we're doing, but we can also look at the issue right now, and that issue is to make sure that these individuals are not treated just as Native Americans were treated before. Understand? That they're not treated like that, that this city will see something brighter come to the forefront, and I'm proud of this city council, and it's, that was hard for me to say a few weeks ago, before we took you guys into the circle of gathering nations, but that same energy that is there, that same positive, uh, uh, energy that's there, let that flow, because obviously it's going to pass. I don't know why we had to listen to all these people, it's going to pass. And so, I want to say as being the last, but I appreciate you. Thank you, guys.
Counselor Davis.
Dr. Bearshield, I just want to acknowledge and say thank you for being here with us. I hope you got a break, uh, it was quite an honor, and thank you, uh, for inviting all of our counselors and for, especially some of us who got to join the circle of honor, it was a big deal. But congratulations on a really great Gathering of Nations this year, the 31st anniversary, you did fabulous job.
Thank you, thank you guys.
So our last speaker this evening is Adriana Ontiveros. And as she's making her way up here, I just want to make sure Renee Ortiz and Terry Dunbar have left the building. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Adriana Ontiveros, I'm with the New Mexico Dream Team and the NACA Inspired School Network. I'm an educator, um, a teacher, special education teacher, um, a taxpayer, the daughter of a single mother, and I, I believe, just as Mr. Cardiel said, that we definitely should allocate this fund to these communities. We've been at the floor, working with the, with the kids, seeing their faces, looking for an opportunity of an education. I've talked to girls who told me that, they have never held a pencil in their life before until now, because, um, they didn't have the opportunity to an education. I think that this community is just waiting for the opportunity to invest back in, in our community, uh, and I, I just want to encourage you guys to, to vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So with that, we, I will turn it back over to Counselor Davis.
Madam Chair, sorry for the interruption, I have signed up to also speak.
What was your name?
Uh, Rosalina Ara from the Center for Wilder Rights.
Rosalina?
Uh-huh. Uh huh.
I do not have Rosalina on the list, but I'll definitely let you speak.
Okay. I would just like to switch my spot and offer it to Luis.
I want to order.
What was the, what did you just say? I'm sorry.
I would like to switch my spot and give it to Luis from New Mexico Dream Team.
No, I think if you're going to speak, it'll be you because I actually don't have anyone else who, so if you'd like to speak, I'll give you a minute and a half and that'll be, we'll conclude with the public speaking after you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, my name is Rosalina Obrado from the Center for Guarda Derechos. And we come here in support of this resolution. We see the importance of giving support. My family and I were devastated by family separation. And it's very beautiful to know that Albuquerque is the city that helped me when I was struggling. And we are proud Burgenios. So thank you and I hope you vote yes.
Thank you. With that, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President.
There are no more speakers this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand, I know our rules. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Counselor Davis. If someone signed up, excuse me, excuse me. There's no one else under this item. If you signed up under public comment, you'll have an opportunity to speak then. Thank you. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll save my remarks and my own opinion for closing, but if it's okay with the President, I'd like to ask the administration very quickly, I know we have Ms. Melindres here and others who've been working on this issue. And if you permit me, I'd like to ask the administration very quickly, sort of on a status update and just some logistical issues if I can. And beginning with, about how many asylees or asylum seekers has the city of Albuquerque received from the Department of Homeland Security over the past few months?
Madam President, Counselor Davis, since March 10th, the city has seen 2,242 asylum seekers who've passed through, including 150 who arrived yesterday and today.
Thank you, ma'am. And is it my understanding that that number has been increasing sort of exponentially over the last few weeks from the handful we got originally, say, a month or so ago, to what we've been receiving more regularly?
Yes. As the number has increased in El Paso and in Las Cruces, those two cities and the nonprofits and faith community there have been asking for more help. And our community has responded by taking more people than they did in the early days.
Ms. Melindres, thank you so much for that. You're an expert on this much more than I am. I've learned a lot in this process, as many of us have, had the opportunity to visit a site with Catholic charities a few weeks ago, and thank you for helping us do that. Can you demystify a little bit of this for us? I think there's a lot of rhetoric and misinformation and good information flying back and forth. But it's my understanding that as people approach the border through the asylum process, the folks that are, that ultimately end up in Albuquerque, and I'll ask in a minute how that happens, but the folks that end up here in Albuquerque or other southwestern cities, they go through a process at the border, they get, they have to have sponsors, there's all kinds of requirements for who gets to move forward under supervision. Can you talk to us just a little bit about what happens when someone comes through the border and how they end up at a place in Albuquerque seeking assistance?
Yes, Madam President and Counselor Davis. These asylum seekers have presented themselves at the border and have asked for asylum and then they've been given a interview, a credible fear interview, that determines that they have a credible fear of returning to their country. And then they are vetted and given a set of immigration documents that allow them to travel in the United States. These immigration documents have a court date on them, about two weeks from the time that they have crossed the border, in which they are supposed to appear before an immigration judge. The adults that have come through Albuquerque largely have had ankle bracelets and that's how they're tracked while they're in the country. And so they stay in our city for just a few days as they're connecting with their sponsor who has been listed on those immigration documents as a person responsible for getting them to their court date and making sure that they complete their part of the process.
Thank you. Madam President, so as I understand, to simplify that, basically, someone arrives at the border, they're giving an interview. If it seems like they meet the credible fear test, they are assigned a sponsor or they bring the name of a sponsor. And that sponsor is also vetted by the Department of Homeland Security for their ability to host this person. And they agreed to pay the cost of locating them from somewhere here in the southwest to wherever they're going. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam President and Mr. Davis. These sponsors, the first thing that the community groups do is they look at these immigration documents and they call the sponsor and verify that they're willing to buy that ticket. And so they buy a plane ticket or a bus ticket as soon as they are able to, which is usually within 24 or 48 hours. And so they're connected with their sponsor and we've done our part getting them through.
And I know that we don't have any new numbers this week, but as I understand, you had some reports and your office has been tracking the reported cost to some of our community groups, say, even for that short-term temporary housing. I think it was some, several tens of thousands of dollars that community groups through individual and local donations mostly have put out of their own pocket to assist folks in that short-term housing. Do you have some numbers on that?
Yes. In the first few weeks of this operation, so about a month into doing this, the city, private donations had spent probably $40,000 on hotel rooms. And that cost will be alleviated now that dormitories have been made available at both expo and at various church retreat houses and places of worship so that the hotel cost will go away.
And Madam President, we've heard some comments and in our emails and in public conversation, some suggestions that perhaps the city of Albuquerque or our community groups, or let me clarify, that perhaps the city of Albuquerque should not assist community groups in doing this work, that some other cities could bear this burden. But there are some rules that apparently the Department of Homeland Security and their various agencies have regarding how far they are willing to take people from El Paso towards their sponsorship destinations. Is that my understanding?
Yes, Madam President and Counselor Davis. We've been told that ICE can only travel within eight hours round trip of the border. And so we're right in a zone where we have a major airport and a bus station. And so ICE contracted buses can come this far and no further. And this is similar in all the other sectors close to the border in other states. But for the state of New Mexico, we are right in the zone where we have everything that's needed to help a person get to where they're going to meet up with their sponsor.
And so, for example, in working with the city of Santa Fe, Madam President, that they have offered to provide assistance and have been sending volunteers to our community organizations, but they're outside of that district, or outside of that driving distance for, honestly, just befuddles me, but I'll get to that later. But so Homeland Security will only, even if someone is destined for, say, Wisconsin, as we heard somebody say, or Virginia, as the young woman I met at one of these things, Homeland Security will only get them to Albuquerque. They're not taking them to those locations, right?
Correct. And one of the reasons is that they would have to turn right back around after going to Santa Fe to be able to leave the state through buses or planes. But it's too far for an ICE contractor as far as we know.
I'll go back to that. And Madam President, maybe Mr. Ray, this may be better for you, whoever wants to answer. But so the consequence, we've heard some folks suggest we shouldn't help these people, but the consequence would be, we have seen in other cities that Homeland Security has released people into other border cities, Las Cruces in particular, around Christmas and some of the holidays, without notice and without support. If they were to do that in the city of Albuquerque and our community groups didn't have the resources to step up, what would be the burden on our existing services? And if I can, let me lay some background, and I promise this is my last question because I know other counselors have several. For Ms. Ofall, who was our homeless, our Deputy Director of Family and Community, who's been leading our homeless services charge, we got some data that showed that the city of Albuquerque has helped 1,200 homeless or nearly homeless persons access housing in the last year, thanks to efforts from the administration and their housing programs and this council's money. But you tell us that almost twice that many persons have been directed or abandoned by Homeland Security into the city of Albuquerque in the last few months. If we fail to provide support for those persons, what would be the impact on our homeless services that we currently provide in the city of Albuquerque?
Madam President and Counselor, obviously, when individuals come to our community and do not have a place to stay, do not have any of the support services that most of us enjoy, they're going to be either in our homeless shelter, trying to get services through that process. Obviously, it'll tax that, our providers that are now trying to provide the services to the many people that live in our streets. Our transit system, our other support systems that we have in the city that help families on a daily basis would all be impacted. The key here is trying to find a process that is, that provides a shelter and that provides a mechanism and a means for folks to, as Michelle just described, to find their sponsors and to begin the process of meeting the court requirements as required to the, by the immigration service. So there is a tremendous burden to us. And without the funding or without the help of these nonprofits and others, they would be in our shelters.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll reserve the rest of my comments for responses from counselors or for closing. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone, any of the counselors have any questions? Counselor Johns.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't necessarily have any questions, but I would like to say a few things. Thank you. I talked with you today and you gave some really good information. And I think we're at the point where I'm sure there's going to be a vote taken very quickly. This is a very touching and needy situation. It is a terrific and horrific situation for the people who are coming here as immigrants. And it's impossible, I believe, to not empathize and sympathize and want to help. And as a people, obviously, with all the people who testified here, we are reaching out, individuals are reaching out. They're donating to churches, they're donating to groups that will help. And that is very important. And it's something that I wholeheartedly support and will do myself. That's what we're supposed to do as humans, helping humans. However, what we're asking for here is a quarter of a million dollars when we have hundreds of people living on our streets. We have homeless children. We have the greatest number of any state of hungry children on our streets and in our city. I believe wholeheartedly that we should put out the call right here for individuals, for citizens, to come forth and donate money and time and their resources to help with this. However, the people on the streets and our children who don't have homes and aren't getting educated and have issues even greater than that, this quarter of a million dollars could go a long ways. And incidentally, this is not money that is just extra money that won't be spent. It's already being planned on using in next year's budget. It just didn't get used for what was allocated before. Let me assure you, the city of Albuquerque never has money that we don't need to use. It just gets, goes from one budget to another, or from one budget to another. I wish we had enough money to give this cause a quarter of a million dollars. I wish we had enough money to find a way to house and feed and educate and keep safe the hundreds of people who are living on the city streets and wherever else they can find a place to stay. I cannot support this. I believe that we as citizens need to step up and do this. We need to open up our hearts and we need to look to ourselves to help. We don't always have to look to tax money and to government to do things. And I think this is one of those cases and I will personally pledge that I will help with this personally. But I can't, but I cannot, I cannot support giving this amount, this type of money when we're already providing services, people, organizers, the people who help with this, because that's what we should do. But, so my vote will be no.
Counselor Sanchez, followed by Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. At the beginning of this meeting, we all stood together reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And together towards the end of that recital, we said, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, for justice for all." I want to thank Jim Cannon. He invited me to one of the homes where some of the asylums had just arrived. And it was truly moving and it was truly amazing to see these individuals and what they were dealing with. I also want to thank Jan, she was the nurse practitioner that was on duty. I mean, I was truly amazed by the work that those nurse practitioners and those doctors and the work they were doing for those asylums and those individuals that had just come in to the home. It was really powerful to see. And I want to thank the interfaith community. I want to thank Catholic charities. I want to thank each and every volunteer that has given up their time and energy to provide the support that these individuals need. I will definitely be supporting this ordinance. We, this coming fiscal year, have a $1.2 billion budget. We have money also in the capital budget to address the issues of homelessness. There will be $14 million in that budget that the taxpayers of this community will have the opportunity to vote on, which will be for a homeless shelter, $14 million. And we have money in there also to address some of the issues of our veterans in our community. I wholeheartedly support our veterans of this community. I support members of the homeless community that are here in Albuquerque. You know, the people of this community have risen to the challenge of some of the needs that we are confronting and that we are facing in the city of Albuquerque. And it's been a major challenge. And we know there are major issues along the border. You know, and it's unfortunate that these are political issues, they are wedge issues, and we need to take the politics out of this and look at what is the best interest of our community and what is the best interest of our city. I thought Father Chavez made a great comment when he talked about transfigured. I know I was there the first day and I was really moved by a woman who was from one of the South American countries. She was separated from her daughter when they were coming, she was coming to Albuquerque. The daughter was sent elsewhere. She had been raped in her country and she and her mom were fleeing the country because the witness threatened to kill not only the victim, but also her mother and her entire family. They are fleeing for a reason. They're not fleeing because they want to be here in the United States. I know it's got to be difficult for them to leave their families. It's got to be extremely difficult. And I want to thank those New Mexico Dream Team members that are here today, Luis Laba for his work and what he has done for the Dreamers. Many of these Dreamers that are here today were young kids that went through the same situation, crisis, that other individuals and young kids that are going through now. Just to see a child smile with what they've been through the last few weeks just really tore my heart. Because I know that deep behind that smile, there was a lot of pain, a lot of agony and a lot of suffering. But when they smiled back to me, I knew they felt that there was somebody that was going to be a friend and not an enemy of theirs. You know, there was individuals that were taken to the ICE place here in Albuquerque because what they did is when they put the monitoring bracelets on them, they were too tight, they were having a difficult time even moving because of what was being done. Let's treat these people as human beings because that's exactly what they are. And we as a city are better than that. And we must, we must work in collaboration with other city members in supporting some of these initiatives. I want to thank Counselor Davis for his work on this legislation. You know, I just think that there's a lot of work that has been done. There is a great amount of work that needs to be done. But united as a community, united as a nation, there is very little that we cannot do. And in this particular case, we must be united. Thank you. And my support is for this resolution.
Counselor Borrego.
You know, when I was a little girl, I always wanted to go to New York and see the Statue of Liberty. And the Statue of Liberty has two plaques on it. And one of them is a bronze plaque that reads, "Your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless tempest toss, to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door." That's what it reads. And I think when our founding fathers wrote the Constitution, they basically were welcoming. They were welcoming all of us as immigrants because all of us came here as immigrants unless you were Native American. And so, you know, I also look to New Mexico history. And New Mexico history had territories. We were Spanish, we were Mexican, you know, and then we were American. And so, as David Dear mentioned earlier, you know, we have to look at these things very deeply. This has been a very difficult issue because I've had, it's been very emotional and people on both sides of the issue, sending strong emails on both sides, calling, you know, it's been... it's been gut-wrenching. But yesterday, I had the pleasure of visiting one of these sites, and I met two ICE buses. I was strongly, strongly moved by seeing these people arrive and and getting off the bus and not really knowing what happened at the border exactly because we've heard a lot of things on TV. You know, there's a lot of news and there's there's all sorts of rhetoric going back and forth. And I, there were five, five different ministries that were there. And they gave they gave me a tour of the facility. And, you know, I watched these children, I mean, mothers and children and fathers. And there were more mothers and children than fathers. And they brought out little, like, not even an entire orange, like little slices of orange. And they brought out apples. And these people were, you know, dirty and tired and hungry. And, you know, St. Michael's and All Angels and Catholic Charities and all of these groups were there. And the doctors that came out to greet me and explain to me that many of them were dehydrated. And there was there were little babies, you know, little babies that were like not even a year old. And I'll tell you, it was quite an eye-opening experience for me, knowing that they had already been in a prison down at the border and they had had to go through this whole process. The churches are already stepping up. They're already stepping up in our community. And not only are they stepping up for these immigrants, but they're stepping up for the homeless and they're stepping up for the veterans. And the city is stepping up. I think on our in our budget, we have, there's fourteen million dollars being asked by the by the mayor for a homeless shelter. You know, there we have the VA hospital. We have already money that's being allocated to the homeless and to the veterans. And, you know, we look at our budget of over a million, a billion dollars, and we ask ourselves, they're asking for $250,000. What percentage of that is that of our budget? To help these people, these groups that are helping them, process to a place of safety because they are in, by definition, asylum seekers. And, you know, it really is, it really is something of a personal safety issue. And so when they talk about humanitarian, I mean, humanitarian is just that. It's humanitarian. And, you know, I, I want to thank Counselor Davis because I know, you know, he's had, he's had to endure, you know, a lot of disappointment and also some safety concerns by having your address put out to the public. I mean, we're all elected officials and safety is an issue for us as elected officials, especially as we move forward in making difficult decisions. People have asked me about the sanctuary city issue. The sanctuary city issue came up in 2003 for Albuquerque. And last year, when it came up again, all we did was reinforce it. So, you know, it's really an issue that came up in 2000, 2003. And I guess, you know, the thing that I that I want to say is, you know, my father fought in Germany in World War II against things that were trying to hurt people and for save for people's safety. And my uncles, I had eight uncles that fought in World War II. And, you know, to ensure our safety. I think this process is actually ensuring safety because without this process, it puts people on the street. And then you'll find them at your door begging for food and money. So this process actually helps take these people to a place of safety because their families are waiting for them or their friends. So I guess I want to close by saying, you know, I ask you, if we don't help others to safety, then who are we as a nation? I mean, who really, who are we? I mean, we're all Dreamers. So, you know, I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you for that, those important points, Counselor Borrego, because this is not a zero-sum game. We do have issues throughout this community. And this is an issue that's coming from outside our community that we can help with. And it is, it's a pittance within our budget to do this. We are housing and working on housing for homeless veterans and specifically within our social program supported by the City of Albuquerque. I just want to make that really clear. Also, I just from my personal perspective on this, I grew up in Puerto Rico as a kid. And I learned a lot about the history of the Caribbean and Central America. And and for me personally, when I look at what's going on today, I'll just give three examples. In Honduras, from 1903 to 1925, the United States intervened militarily in Honduras seven times, just between 1903 and 1925, on behalf of American agricultural interests and companies like the United Fruit Company, which dominated Central America in those days. In 1954, our CIA overthrew the democratically elected government of Guatemala and installed a military dictatorship. The the president, our Benz at that time, was doing such horrible things as instituting a minimum wage and universal suffrage. And we went in and threw him out in 1954. In 1976, El Salvador, there was a, a, an insurgency against a military dictatorship there. And those who know of him or remember him, Archbishop Romero, who has now been beatified by Pope Francis and is expected to become named a saint, fought against that along with with popular, a popular uprising. And he was assassinated and gave his life for that. So we're not so perfect here. And so just as a country, that's my perspective. I'm still proud to be an American citizen and having been born here. But but we have to look back at the history of why these countries are so dysfunctional today. And we share a lot of that responsibility. So we share our responsibility now to welcome these people into our country. I just want to say, esta noche me siento muy orgulloso de ser miembro de esta comunidad tan compasiva. Tonight, I feel very proud to be a member of our very compassionate community. And I absolutely will support this. And I appreciate the outpouring of people from our community that came out here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? No? Actually, so then I will, before I turn it over to Counselor Davis to close, and thank you for for the amendment, Counselor Sanchez and Counselor Gibson, I just want to say that, you know, just hearing everyone speak this evening and hearing the other side is that I just, you know, we have lots of needs, as was stated by other counselors. We have lots of needs in our community and we're working tirelessly to try to address them. Counselor Benton just gave an example, Counselor Borrego gave an example, you know, with the homeless community, you know, millions of dollars. We passed it, the taxes passed at the county. We're partnering with the county, you know, so we're we're working on it. We realize that, you know, are we there yet? And do we still have these needs in our community? But we do. But to use this issue as why we shouldn't provide help to people who need help is, I just don't understand that. This is, this isn't a political issue. It's not a budget issue. It's a humanitarian issue. So with that, I'll pass it over to Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I really do appreciate my colleagues and most of the folks who joined us tonight for the civil way we've been able to have this conversation. We can look online and see that other cities have not been able to do that well. And I think that that's in part because of our history and because of our reputation and also because on this council, like, politics doesn't usually take a front seat to getting things done. Now, let me say this really quickly in closing. We've heard from a lot of voices in our community tonight. My colleagues will be grateful to know that although I can speak for a long time, as they know, I don't think another long speech for me is going to change much tonight. So let me close by saying this. Over the past year or so, almost two now, our city has risen to the challenge that Mayor Keller put out for us to unite around the idea of One Albuquerque. That has not meant just the people who own a home or just the people who were here before a slogan showed up or before an election day. It has always, for 300 years in Albuquerque, included those who transited through our city, including on top of the land and the people that were sometimes here before them without their permission or without asking to do that. We've heard from some people that the City of Albuquerque should not step up and help those who are coming here. We've heard that individuals should step up and do that work. Well, the fact is, they have. For more than two months now, communities and churches and nonprofits have organized, they have gathered donations, they have done work to house the people who were abandoned in our city by our federal government, who, quite frankly, is abandoning their own charge to care for those who arrive at the border with a legitimate claim, as we've heard tonight. For more than 300 years, we've been a crossroads for families. I will don't think we should sit back and let history look back on our current chapter and say that we failed this test that's before us. As Counselor Benton mentioned and others have, our choice tonight is not binary. We don't have to choose between homelessness, serving our homeless, hiring more police, or any of the thousands of services our city's nearly billion-dollar budget provides to make life easier for our city and our residents who live here every single year. Counselor Borrego, you ask a great question, like, what percentage of this is our budget? It is a small gesture. It is one-four-thousandth of our billion-dollar budget. And quite frankly, it comes out of money that is no good, no going nowhere else. And it is for not is not available by law for us to use to hire new people, for new police officers or anything else. It's for short-term, one-time projects. And I can think of no other more important short-term project in the City of Albuquerque as demonstrated by the people who came tonight than this. As we heard, this year, we have helped 1,200 residents who were formerly homeless or near homeless in our city obtain housing. We have invested, as a city council, answering the mayor's charge, now two million more dollars that we're proposing in the budget here and another 14 million that we're asking voters to vote for in November to finish the job. We have shown more progress in the last year on addressing policing, homelessness, and economic activity than we have in the last six that did virtually none of that on those big ticket items. So instead of arguing that we should not do anything, we should choose to spend a few dollars to help a few organizations who offer a shower, a warm meal, and a phone and a phone call to their sponsor and a ride to the bus station. That is simply not too much to ask. And by the way, I think it's the moral and the human thing to do. With that, I ask my counselors and urge your support.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. With that there, thank you for the close. With that, there's a motion.
Madam President, I just, and members of the council, I just want to say that on behalf of the mayor and the city, we want to thank all of the nonprofit folks in our community and the people in our community that have stepped up to help deal with this issue. And as I think Counselor Davis said, we're One Albuquerque, and this is an opportunity for us to show who we are as a city, as a city, and we urge, we support the resolution as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. And before we take the vote, you know, I'm assuming there's going to be some applauding afterwards, but I would ask you, but I would, I would just let you know, I want to let you know, just so that I can be heard, is that we will be taking a dinner break right after the vote. So, thank you. With that, there's a motion and a second for approval of R. 143 as amended. All those in favor say yes. Yes and raise your hand. Opposed? No and raise your hand. The motion passes. Thank you.